2020 said notice was emailed to the Nutley Sunday Star Ledger and tapped into Nutley, mailed to the Nutley Township Clerk, posted on the district website. This is an official meeting. We have the flag salute please. I pledge allegiance to the flag. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation.
One nation. Under God.
Indivisible.
With liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. DePisa, can I have roll call please?
Mr. Carnesella.
Yes.
Mr. Dancheck Martin.
Yes.
Mr. DeMaya.
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara.
Yes.
Mrs. Quirk.
Here.
Mr. Riley.
Here.
Mr. Scolera.
Here.
Ms. Zaro.
Here.
Mr. Kozinski.
Here. Dr. Glazer, are you on?
Yes, sir, I am.
Okay, I know we just came off a back-to-back meeting, but you are up, okay? And before you get started, I just wanted to mention one thing to my board members specifically. We're going to listen to the presentation from Dr. Glazer. Then we will hear citizens' questions concerning the resolution items. Then, my board members, I would appreciate it if you have any questions for Dr. Glazer or any concerns after Dr. Glazer and the citizens get done with their concerns, then my board members can ship in and talk. Is that okay?
Point of order, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn this meeting until August 17th at 6:30. I have extreme trepidation to have this meeting at this time without counsel present when we have resolutions tonight, including this reopening, when I need counsel to give me advice with potential lawsuits. And I think we should adjourn until next Monday when we have time to have legal presence and give us advice, which is not happening tonight since he didn't even know we were having a meeting tonight.
Well, myself and Dr. Glazer do speak to the attorney today. Guidance has been given.
Charlie, let me interrupt for a second because I'll second the question for Ken.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, Robert.
Okay, guidance has been given by Dr. Glazer and myself on what's going to be discussed. It's a draft plan. It is not, it's a plan in motion. It's a fluid plan. Nothing is being decided tonight as far as, if you look at the resolution, it's a draft plan that we're voting on.
That's one resolution, Mr. President. With all due respect, there's other resolutions which we're voting on tonight and uncomfortable as well. And we've already had a second and a third, and according to Robert's rules, that cannot be debated.
I'm not debating it, I'm discussing it, okay? And I think I have the right to do that.
You do, but the meeting should be adjourned.
Well, that's, again, still left for discussion. The two policies that are up tonight are about the opening of the refer, opening of the plan and the policy resolution. Both of them are first reading, for lack of a better term, strictly for discussion. No reason to have the attorney here, and we've spoken to him. He's fine with that altogether. He's given us his input on the policy change that he's comfortable with. So I don't see the need to have him here after discussing it with him during the day.
Well, that's, that's not for you to decide. And we've already had a second meeting and a third that can't be debated when a motion to adjourn is seconded and thirded with a, with a, with another meeting date and time scheduled next Monday at 6:30. It's not debatable. You can't debate it.
I believe the board has to vote on.
Oh, excuse me.
I believe the board has to vote on the option. It has to be a majority.
It does not have to be a majority. You might want to refer to Robert's rules.
All right, timeout. Robert's rules say it is up for discussion. We are discussing it right now, and I will call for the vote. Right now, I'm giving you a discussion on it, okay? That is what, we feel that the attorney has given us clear direction on where we're going tonight, but I will take a roll call of the board to delay the meeting or postpone the meeting until the 17th.
Let it be noted, let it be noted, Mr. President, and let it be noted, first of all, I have tremendous respect for you. This is not about you. Trust me when I tell you, it has nothing to do with you. This has to do with what's right and what's wrong. This has to do with the fact that as a board, our single primary obligation is to ensure that the district is well-run, not to run the district, but ensure that it's well-run. For us to receive policies this morning at 7 o'clock that we're voting on, now you may have spoken to the attorney, I just got home from work, I didn't have an opportunity to speak to the attorney. I just opened up two emails, one at 110 and one at 222, from the attorney. I haven't had time to discuss it with him. So if you want to have a vote, have a vote, but as far as I'm concerned, the meeting should be postponed until next Monday. So go ahead and call and vote.
Yes, that's clearly your call. You have a second on it. I'm calling for a vote to postpone the meeting until the 17th, which we'll have a roll call, Mr.?
Mr. President. Mr. President.
Yes, sir, Mr. Ferrara.
Just, just a question, right? So I, I understand, I understand that we have to have these certain policies in place. Moving the meeting to next Monday, does that in any way affect us having the policy in time for school opening?
Yes, it does, okay? And that was clearly the direction from the attorney also. That's why he has spoken to myself, Dr. Glazer, the policy chair, saying that the, what he's prepared for us to introduce tonight as a first reading is perfectly illegal. Nothing has to be done besides that except for discussion. So the need to postpone it till the 17th doesn't bode well for us as far as legal terms are concerned.
But does it, but does it change, but does it really change anything because we still, we have a first, we have a first reading, whether it's tonight or it's Monday, we still have to have the second reading, our last meeting in August, right? So those are the two readings?
No, we, we, so, so we, we can call another special, we can call another special meeting. Let's call another special meeting. Let's have one on the 17th. Let's have one on the 19th. We don't have to wait till the 31st.
Mr. Riley, please, let him finish his statement, okay?
I thought he did, I'm sorry, Mr. Ferrara.
Listen, I, 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 I too, you know, I, I understand the frustration that, you know, every board member, if they have a question that they want to ask our attorney, you know, the attorney's not here, right? So the, the question is, as long as we are okay to have everything in place by, by school opening, then, you know, th- then that's fine. That's, that's really my question. We need to make sure we don't have any issues with that.
The, the concern of the attorney is that we're not going to get this policy in, actually, we're a little bit late on getting this policy moved forward now, and it's simply a policy for the first reading that any one of our board members can discuss with the attorney after tonight when we introduce it, if that's what we do. It's the same thing with the opening of schools. It's simply a draft, open for discussion. No, no decisions are being made as far as that is concerned tonight, introducing them.
So, Mr. Kozinski, may I say something, please?
Yeah.
So here's my recommendation, and I'm watching postings here. There are a lot of parents here to hear about the plan. Can we go forward and hear the plan tonight and not take a vote on it? And I don't care if you want to waive the resolutions, but I think we have a lot of people here that want to hear the opening plan, and I think we should at least move forward, let Dr. Glazer make her presentation, and have us at least discuss it tonight so that we know what the whole plan is and the parents, there's, I want to say there's 239 people on, and that's the largest we've ever had. It's probably people here about, hear about the plan, and I just feel we should at least hear the plan tonight. We don't have to take a vote on it.
And I thought, no, thank you, Mrs. Scoler. I thought that's all we were, hold on. I thought that's all we were doing tonight, Mr. Scoler, was moving the draft of the reopening schools, simply a draft to open up this discussion with the parents, board members, and anyone else that wants to talk about it. That's all we're doing tonight.
All, all I'm saying is I think Mr. Riley's problem is voting on the draft, right? So, and if that's the major issue tonight, I think we should, Dr. Glazer, go forward and present it, and this, this, like I said, there's 239 people, it's the largest I've ever seen here. I see their messaging going back, they thought they were here for this. I think we should at least let the citizens have a voice tonight without just canceling the meeting, in my opinion.
I agree.
Mr. Riley.
I would love to hear her present the plan. I personally have issues with the plan that I'd also like to discuss with the attorney, such as students and staff having to clean tables and desks in between classes. I don't agree with that. I don't support that. And that's what, another issue I wanted to discuss with the attorney, what's our liability with that? So to even move forward with a presentation with a plan that I don't even agree with? And, and again, let's invoke Robert's rules. I would love, and I love Mr. Scolera and respect him to death, but I've already made a motion to adjourn this meeting. We need to vote on it, and let's, let's vote. Let the board, let the board vote, and then I will stand with the majority.
Okay, the motion and the second out there is to adjourn tonight's meeting until the 17th, so our board members can have more input from the attorney if that's what they think is necessary.
So, Mr. Kozinski, I'd like to amend it, I'd like to amend it to add, it could be a one or two vote, but at minimal, we at least present the plan to the people that are here tonight and not vote on it.
And then, by, by Robert's rules, Fred, you have to get the amendment from the person to introduce the resolution.
And I'll, I'll go forward, thank you.
Mr. Riley would have to accept that, Fred.
I didn't hear what he said.
He wants to let everybody still hear the plan for the 200 and something parents that are on here that we're accountable to right now.
There's no vote, there's no vote.
Okay, so right after she delivers the plan, we're going to vote. Is that correct?
No, no vote tonight. I just want to make sure. Now we're up to 250 people coming to hear about the plan.
Charlie, I can't even hear him, I don't know why.
I'll, I'll go through, Ken, what he's saying, what Mr. Scolera's asking for, and I don't know that I totally agree with him, but what he's asking for is that Dr. Glazer make the presentation on the plan. We, we listen to the plan, we listen to the concerned citizens in Nutley, board input and everyone, and we're not, and then not vote on the draft plan that's presented to us tonight.
And then after that, we'll vote to adjourn the meeting.
But is there even going to listen to it? Ken Riley wants to waste another week.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Excuse me, miss. Whoever has your microphones open, you need to close your microphone. Hello? 201, whoever you are, you need to close your microphone.
Ian, come in mute everybody.
Thank you, 201. And that, the discussion was then, still about the policy resolution, it's still out there. And again, it's, it's a first reading, which we've dealt with before. It's a first reading to make the board aware of what the policy is at. You got it in your email, you should have, maybe, hopefully had time to read it, and that's simply what the policy for resolution is, to do the first reading, and then we can, if you want, you can discuss it with the attorney now and the 31st.
With all due respect. I've been here since 2004. I understand exactly what first readings and second readings are, and I stand by what I said earlier. I need counsel input before it's even moved forward, before we even have a first reading or a second reading. I have no problem with letting the superintendent move forwards with presenting her plan to reopen and get public input. That's fine. Directly after that, I'm asking again to adjourn the meeting and moving anything forward, whether it's the new plan or resolutions for policies until the 17th at 6:30.
And I, can you hear me now? Can you hear me now? I would support that, Mr. Riley.
Thank you. Let's move forward then, let's do it.
Both of you understand that the policy we're putting forward has been approved by our board attorney. It's open for discussion, but 95% of it is federally mandated, it's not Nutley mandated.
It, with, with all, with all due respect, it hasn't been approved by, by the, by our attorney. The attorney gave us a, a, one paragraph pro and, pro and con, and if we do one thing versus if we decide on another thing. That's not him approving moving forward. He hasn't heard from me yet. So that's why, I'm not going to read it, it's not going to be read, we're going to adjourn. Let's move forward, let these 250 people that are still here waiting for the superintendent to present the plan, let her present the plan, and then we'll adjourn the meeting.
Again, Mr. Riley, that's your opinion, we'll take a roll call, okay?
No, it's not my opinion, it's Robert's rules. I clearly understand what Robert's rules are. It's not my opinion.
And so do I, you're not an attorney.
I don't think you do, because if you did, you wouldn't be arguing with me, because it's not a, to be an argument.
Guys.
I'm not arguing with you, Mr. Riley.
Let's move forward.
Mr. Mr. DePisa.
What, what are we voting on?
We're voting on, we're voting on moving tonight's meeting to the 17th of August, so that tonight we can hear the presentation of the reopening plan, even though we're not going to vote on the draft. The second part is, we are going to vote on the policy, or we're going to move it to the 17th. Mr. DePisa.
Mr. Carnesella.
Okay, so I will be voting no to adjourning the meeting. At this point, with the policies that were issued, which are boilerplate language, there were some add-ons that were community-related. Scott, our attorney, did review them, we received them yesterday. When I got them, I forwarded them along to my committee for them to review as well. I looked at them. I didn't see any issues with them in moving them in their first reading, so I am completely fine with that. We could have a further discussion if necessary with the changes that may need to be made. It's no different than we're doing with the org chart that we put into second reading at our last board meeting, which I did say that I would help develop so that we could have a deeper conversation about it for our final entry into our policy jacket. With regard to the draft plan, this draft plan was released over a week ago. I know it comes with a lot of challenges, not anything that, that I think all of us are faced, none of it can be termed that we can all love, everyone. There's a living document, and it is something that's going to continue to evolve as we get closer to the school year. So I am completely fine and content with giving the public the opportunity to hear the reentry plan, and I have absolutely no issue with moving this meeting forward and doing what we need to do to get to the next step in, in opening our schools.
Mrs. Dancheck Martin.
I agree with Mr. Carnesella, I do not think that we should adjourn the meeting. This is the first reading of the policies. Also, the plan was delivered August 4th. There, we have had ample time to review it, and I do not agree with adjourned the meeting, especially since we have such a large crowd of stakeholders on the meeting right now that would like to comment on either the policies or the, or the draft plan. Thank you.
Mr. DeMaya.
Oh, yes.
Mr. Ferrara.
Okay, so the, the motion that was made, was the motion that we're going to adjourn the meeting after presenting the plan and allowing the public to hear it?
That is correct, that's how I heard it.
Okay, is the motion also that we're going to postpone voting on the policies?
Yes, yes.
No.
No.
No, that's not the motion.
It is the motion. It is my motion. My motion to adjourn it so we don't vote on the policies.
The motion on, on the floor is to adjourn the meeting with no vote of the board, and then I have a question, are we still going to executive session after whatever you decide to do?
No. No, the meeting's adjourned, because we adjourned the meeting right after she does her presentation and the public gets to speak on the opening.
First of all, Mr. Riley, the postponing the meeting, I, in my opinion, should not be done, but there's no reason why we can't go into executive session.
There is. The meeting's adjourned. There's no executive when a meeting is adjourned.
I, I, I beg to differ with you.
And by the way, with, with all due respect, does anybody sitting at this table know what executive is about? Have we been told what, what's going on in executive session tonight? I haven't been told. I don't even know what executive it's worth tonight.
It's, it's in, if you, if you have a chance to, and I know you're very busy, if you have a chance to look at the agenda, you will see that executive is there to discuss legal and personnel matters.
Was that the first agenda or the second agenda?
Second, second agenda.
Okay, and what, what time did that go out?
It went out at 3:30.
I'll say 3:30.
That's completely unacceptable and disrespectful.
Thank you. Mr. DePisa, continue, continue with the vote, please.
Mr. Ferrara. Okay, again now, so this motion is to allow the plan to be presented, allow the public to be able to comment on it, and then we are not, the motion is not to postpone the vote on the policies?
The motion is to not vote on the policy and not have executive. Move that to next Monday at 6:30.
It's Mr. Riley's motion. Frank, second that whole agenda, right, Frank? Okay.
Okay, I, I, I am, I am not, I am not in favor, obviously. I, I want the plan presented, I want the public to be able to discuss the plan, right? Okay, I am okay with pushing off the voting on the policies and the plan, so any date in the future.
Thank you.
Excuse me, can I just say something on behalf of the parents that are on the call?
I'm sorry, sir. No, I'm sorry, excuse me. Right, right now, you don't have that flexibility, okay? I'm sorry to tell you that, but you don't have a word right now.
So, Mr. Ferrara, is it yes or no?
He's a yes.
It's a yes to what I said.
Yep.
Mrs. Quirk.
I have a lot of concerns about this. I would be, I feel very uncomfortable having, moving forward without counsel present, so I'm yes to adjourn.
Mr. Riley.
Yes to adjourn after the presentation and public input.
Fred, you're still muted.
I, I was trying to be muted because too much was going on, I'm sorry. So, we're going to present, we're not going to vote on the policies, the policies don't affect us on any way of a timeline, correct, in statute that they have to be adopted by?
No, by statute, no. There's a concern that we wanted to get the information out to our staff, yes, but there's no statute of limitations, no.
I, I, excuse me, I'm going to jump into this because I believe that those policies need to be enforced before we start school, Eric.
Yeah, they do.
Okay, so if we have a meeting next week in the 31st, right, which we're scheduled, that's, that's before school starts, correct?
Technically correct.
Yes.
Okay, so I'll vote yes.
Ms. Zaro.
So, I'm not okay with adjourning the meeting. I will be okay if everybody doesn't want to vote, but just speaking as the policy chair, took a lot of time and effort in policies last night, and I sent them out myself last night to every other committee chair. So excuse my voice, but if anybody didn't read them or didn't agree with them, now wasn't the time to say it. I am totally okay with waiting to vote on anything. I just think we need to listen to the plan so we could hear the 250 parents that are on the call right now, that are reading the comments and getting physically ill. So I want to hear the plan, let the parents say everything they need to say, and then if we need to move this to Monday, I'm okay with moving this to Monday. But I also don't know Robert's rules as in-depth as Charlie or Ken does, so I can't agree or disagree to not go into closed session because I don't know, I'm not going to lie, if one has to do with the other. If we adjourn the opening meeting, are we allowed to go into closed session still? I don't know that, so I'm not going to speak to it, I'm going to abstain from answering about that. But in the very least, we need to hear the plan, and we need to let the parents, we can't ask them to make a decision Friday and not let them hear the plan.
So, Eric, do you still have to vote yes or no? Yes means we're going to hear the parents.
Yes, we're going to hear them.
Thank you.
Mr. Kozinski.
No. So, Dr. Glazer, you'll make the presentation of the plan, we will not vote on it tonight. After that, we will adjourn our meeting.
We will have the public also be able to discuss the plan tonight as well.
Yes, definitely. We, we will go through the plan, we will go through the hearing of citizens, we will go through the hearing of citizens again on non-board issues, and then we will adjourn the meeting. Dr. Glazer.
Good evening, everybody, and welcome to our discussion of the Nutley Public Schools' restart and recovery plan. I know that there are a number of you on the call. Thank you. A number of you that are on the call tonight that we've heard from with questions, a number of people that need some clarification in order to make your decision of either in-person hybrid instruction or 100% virtual instruction, and I thank you. I think that it is a wonderful testament to the parents of Nutley that we have 250 people on this call. I'm assuming it's not just parents. I am, I am with full confidence that we have our staff on the call, that not just our teaching staff, but some of our administrative staff, and for each of you, I am grateful. Over the last several weeks, we have spent a tremendous amount of time working through the Department of Education's restart guidelines, the New Jersey Department of Health's guidelines, our local and county Department of Health's guidelines, to be able to come up with this draft plan. And as several people said, you all received a copy of the plan as well as a summary, some of the board members on August 3rd, and our Board of Commissioners, and the full public on August 4th. And I will say again, thank you to all of the hundreds of you that participated in the development of this plan. We had four task forces based on our strategic plan committees. We have a curriculum and instruction task force, a health and wellness task force, configuration and infrastructure, and safety and security. And in each of the 20 meetings that we held over the last three weeks, we had a consistent 50 people on each of those calls. We also have several independent groups, parent groups, other groups, PTO groups, who have participated in their own ways, and there are another several hundred people that were involved in that way. I don't know how to begin to tell you that your feedback and your input has shaped everything that we're going to be talking about this evening, and your questions tonight, your input tonight, your feedback tonight will continue to input. Again, as has already been said, this is a draft plan. It is constantly evolving, it's dynamic. It says that on the first page, it says it on the last page, and we are committed to that. We know that we have many constraints under each of those categories, whether it's health and safety, safety and security, or the delivery of instruction, where we know that there are still conversations to be had, still task force committees to sit through, and decisions to be made. And again, I could not be more fortunate with a community that's willing and patient and supportive to work through this so that we can ensure the safe return to our buildings in some capacity that is being mandated by the Department of Education. To do that requires a heavy lift from all of you, a vote of confidence, knowing that we are able to bring your children, to bring our staff, to bring everybody in, in a safe and secure and healthy way. So before we get to the educational components of the plan, and I know there are many questions about that, I can see in the chat, I want to make sure that Ian, who's monitoring the chat, is seeing some of the comments from people that can't hear. If you can't hear, you might need to turn up the volume on your own personal computer. For those of you that are concerned that you won't have an opportunity to ask questions, we promise that you will have. we promise that you will have an opportunity to ask questions this evening. And you will have an opportunity to hear the best answer that we have available at this point in our draft plan. In addition to hearing from me this evening, you will also be hearing from Kent Bania, our Assistant Superintendent, and from Janine Locan Solo, our Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, pre-K to 12. We also have other administrators on the call this evening. And depending on your question, we might be, have to call on them to answer some of your questions. But I do promise you, we'll make it through before we adjourn this evening. So, our draft plan. As I said, we, we worked our way through using our strategic plan groups. In addition, the Department of Education gave us four guiding areas. Conditions for learning. Those conditions for learning include our health and safety standards. What are those minimum standards that we need to establish to be able to return to the buildings for learning? What is it that we need to look at as far as our operations and working to make sure that our classrooms, to make sure that our therapy rooms, our transportation, our entry and exit into the buildings, to make sure that our cleaning practices and all of those aspects are considered? The second thing that is part of this plan is leadership and planning. That entails the restart committees, which I already discussed. We also, if you've been listening, have pandemic response teams for the district and in each of our buildings who have been actively involved in this restart plan. This piece is also about scheduling and staffing, which I know is of considerable concern to not just our parents on the call, but our community and our staff. Talking about the in-person hybrid learning environment, the roles and responsibilities for that. Talking about what it might look like for 100% virtual environment. This is also where we can answer questions about athletics. I know that we are prepared to start that on Friday. Whether that happens with the health and safety, I don't know at this point. I remain confident that our plan is in place. We also needed to address policy and funding as part of this restart plan. In each of the meetings, we've talked about policy. We've looked at our CARES Act funding, we've looked at digital divide funds, we've looked at district budget funds and how we are going to support this reopening plan. And finally, the continuity of learning. Making sure that whatever delivery of instruction that we develop is equitable, not just for our general education students, but for our special education students. For all those students who receive related services and those students that may have disabilities and individual concerns that we have to consider as we reopen our school buildings again in some capacity. This also includes our technology and connectivity. Again, we've done, I think, a remarkable job with equity, making sure that internet access has been available to all and devices have been available to all. And we'll continue to even up the ante on that as we go forward. This is also where we'll talk about curriculum instruction and assessment and our professional learning. And again, each of those areas in and of itself is a robust area. Each of those areas could have its own presentation, could have its own conversation. I encourage you, if there's any of, anything that I've said so far or any area of the plan where you have a question, to please include that in the chat. It doesn't have to be specific to curriculum instruction. It can also be health and safety. It could also be technology, any, any aspect of what we're talking about to meet the mandate of returning in some capacity in September. And again, we'll have that discussion. Typically, I would pause right now, but I see that the chat is lengthy and many of the questions are related to curriculum and instruction. So at this time, I'm going to ask Mr. Bania to share his screen for the presentation of curriculum and instruction with Mrs. Locan Solo. And then perhaps after that, we can take some questions and discussion. Mr. Bania?
Thank you, Dr. Glazer. Mr. Vemeister is presenting the screen. I'd like to thank the Board of Education as well as all the parents for showing up. We value all of your input and this is no easy task. But through a couple of months of working with stakeholders, this is the plan that we've put together for your review and your comment. Thank you. Presented to the Board of Ed. Ian, can you please go to the next slide? So the guiding questions from the road back guidance that we have, that we have in here, that we've considered through all of our task forces and brought up in moments like this, is in the hybrid plan, we're bringing students back to school. Will this change encourage social distancing? Will this change discourage student cohort mixing? Will this change improve hygiene practices? And how will this change impact the mental health and wellness of students, staff, and school community? Ian, you can go to the next slide, please. So on the screen is a schematic. It needs a lot of explanation, I'll provide that at this time. There's also some paragraphs describe this in the draft that Dr. Glazer sent out on August 4th. For each level, secondary as well as elementary, the teams have worked to put together a plan that balances student safety with maximizing in-person instructional time. To do that required us to look at the capacity of our buildings, look at the class size. I'm sorry, and the schedule. And we decided that the best use to bring class size down to parameters we felt comfortable bringing students in was divide the secondary schools, the high school and the middle school into thirds. This will be done in a standard A through F, G through O, and P through Z breakdown. It works out pretty well. We've run that in our scheduling systems and we're able to guarantee that most classes fall within the parameters we're looking for based on classroom space. In this model, we look to maximize the time if we're bringing students in. We went to 45-minute periods for the in-person. You'll notice some districts are running through all eight classes in a half-day type schedule. When we brought that to our first task force and when we thought about that, we realized that that would provide about 25 minutes of instructional time with seven transitions between each class. And those two things impacted us. We thought that if we were going to bring students in, we would value a longer amount of instructional time for each student. And we would also like to reduce the amount of time students are in the hallways moving from class to class and the amount of times we have to clean desks between class use. We also paired that with some feedback we've heard from the spring and the fact that eight classes was very challenging for students and teachers in a virtual environment to keep up, to pace, to self-pace. So we did a couple of things with this schedule considering all of those factors. We decided that we would bring students in in thirds and we would focus on four classes at a time. So you'll see the first three days, the first day, we call that G1. It's called G1 because we have various schedules in our, in our rotating drop schedule that, that are letters and G was the next letter. So this is the next version of a schedule. So G1, G2, G3 indicates the three different thirds that would come in for the G day. The G day will be focused in classes one through four for 45 minutes. One-third of the students will come in in person. Two-thirds of the students would be virtual for that day. And then it would follow with H1, H2, and H3, which would be a repeat where students would come in for periods five through eight, a third at the time. So we're talking about three-day instructional units. We're talking about students, staff, and faculty that can focus on four classes at a time. And we're talking about reducing capacity in these buildings to one-third of the capacity. All these things answer our guiding questions in moving forward. So the typical day would look like 7:55, teachers report. Teachers will prepare for in-person as well as virtual learning. They would, they would put assignments in school, G, they would post do-nals and lesson plans at that time. Then students would enter the building. We, we put a half an hour for student screening. And to admit students, teachers would be in their classrooms, helping settle students as they come in. The school would go through class one, two, three, and four on G days and five, six, seven, and eight on H days. Students will be dismissed at 12:22, which will give them time to travel, which will provide lunch. And teachers will then move to a virtual office hour setting where they will use this time to connect with students that have chosen 100% remote instruction, drop-in support, as well as small group instruction. If we were to transition, and that was another aspect of all of the plannings, if, if we need to go and pivot, is a word that they use a lot in the guidance, to all remote learning for all students, we would still run this schedule. We would meet in a Google Meet every student in every class for every day that class is meeting. So for example, on the G days, everyone in class one would meet all three G days. And for the H days, everyone in class five would meet in a Google Meet for those H days. Teachers would use that time for direct instruction. They could release some students to independent practice. They could pull some small groups at that time. And they will follow up with an assignment and extension in the afternoon time in those classes. Next slide, please, Ian. The middle school looks very similar to the high school. With the middle-aged learners, there are some modifications to this where we have built in a little more structure for students in our middle school. Again, based on feedback and based on information we've gathered from March to this current day. The name breakdown would be the same. So students in both schools would be rotating the same way. And the rotation would, I should say that the days would be pre-planned for both schools. And a calendar would be put out prior to the school year. Whether we go remote or we are hybrid, we would follow the same schedule. You will notice that everything being the same, the periods are a little different in the middle school. The middle school schedules for lunch periods. They have seven academics and one lunch period, whereas the high school has eight academics and a lunch period. So there's a small difference there. And we would bring in our lunch period first, period four, followed by one, two, three. So we could treat lunch like a study hall and stagger students in, provide extra support in school if needed, provide counseling in school if needed. And we have different students showing up at different times to the building, which is also important. Period, day four, five, and six. The middle school does not go with the same name of days as the high school. So we simply called it day four, five, and six. You'll see period six, seven, eight, and then five. Periods five and six are both lunch periods at the high, at the middle school. And this would allow these to be study halls. And if we, when we transition back to, back to school, we could just apply this schedule to coming back in person. Students will be dismissed at noon. And in the afternoon, there will be half-hour structured time for each class period. So there'll be a half an hour for periods one, two, three, and four on the first three days and a half-hour period four, five, and six. With the expectation that all students attend these, all students that are virtual and 100% remote attendees on those days. Again, if we were to pivot to 100% remote, we will replace the in-person times with Google Meet times and require all students to attend each day's Google Meet. Ian, can you go to the next slide? As we move through, we've created some sample student schedules to give you a different perspective on this. This would be a, looking at a sample student schedule of Mrs. Locan Solo for September. She is in the, her last name begins in L, she's in the second third of the alphabet. She would come in in person anytime there's a two, this is based on the high school. So she would have that middle day of the three-day cycle as her in-person day. She would start off on Tuesday, the eighth, virtual. In-person on Wednesday, virtual on Thursday for classes one through four. Then she would come in, she'd be virtual for classes five, three on Friday, in-person on the 14th, and then virtual on, on Tuesday, the 15th. This cycle would replete, repeat in six-day cycles for all eight periods. And you can see that she is in, in this model, she's in twice, two times a week and twice one time a week. So she will alternate between having two weeks of two in-person days with one week of one in-person day and move forward. To give you one more example, Ian, you can go to the next slide, please. This is for me, Kent Bania. I would fall into the first third of the alphabet. So I would start on the eighth in-person. Go two days virtual on the 10th, followed up by the 11th would be in-person. Anywhere where there's a one in this. The middle school would rotate the same way, replacing the G and the H days with days one through six. And they would cycle the same way. I hope this gives you a better indication of what, what it would look like for, for students at this time. I thank you for listening. There's been a lot of work put in on this. We appreciate all the work as we present to the board and the community. I wanna turn it over to Janine. Of course, I'll be available for questions and feedback following this presentation. Janine, thank you so much.
Thanks, Ken, that was great. So I'm going to present on plans for the elementary hybrid schedule. The elementary schedules and the kindergarten schedule that follows, both follow that cohort structure that we know to be best practiced with social distancing. So students will be assigned either a cohort Group A or Group B in the hybrid model. And you'll see in front of you now the plan for grades one through six. And then following this, I'll talk more about kindergarten specifically. So what I'd like to do is just walk you through and orientate you a little bit first to the, the graphic here. You have Monday, Tuesday, where you have a Group A and a Group B. Wednesday is an all-virtual day and then a Thursday, Friday. So what I've done is in pink highlighter there, you'll see Group A, which would be in-person for Monday and Tuesday. And then Group A would be virtual for Thursday, Friday. Similarly, if you were assigned to cohort Group B, you would be virtual Monday, Tuesday, and in-person on Thursday and Friday. I will also point out before I go through the daily schedule that Wednesday is an all-virtual day for all hybrid students. And I'll talk more about that in a few minutes. So during the in-person days, I'll just walk you through the schedule as it appears here. We have 8:20 to 9 o'clock, which will be student arrival and screening. During that time, teachers will be checking in with some virtual students while students enter the building and get settled in. And we're, we're based on what we know about other districts who've been doing this across the country. We're allotting about 40 minutes for that screening to take place and for students to arrive in their classrooms. From 9:00 to 12:30, during the in-person days, the elementary students in grades one through six will get in-person instruction in their classrooms, socially distanced and following all of the guidelines. And what I've done here is just break down for you one possible way that the different content areas could look. We're still talking through exact minute delineations for each content area. And it may depend on the day and what, if there's, you know, a science experiment, then science may be longer. Or if there's something specific for math, that may be cut short for one day. But just to give you an idea of how that in-person time will be spent, there'll be approximately 60 minutes of math instruction, 90 minutes of English Language Arts instruction, and 45 minutes of a science or social studies instruction. So that would be socially distanced in their classroom with their classroom teacher from 9:00 to 12:30. Then the in-person instruction would end at 12:30. So you'll see on the schedule there, we have a 12:30 to 1 o'clock student dismissal time there built in. And then from 1:00 to 3:30, students would be home. I have lunch at home there built into the schedule. And then underneath that, you'll see that from 2:00 to 3:30, there's a specials period, which were in parentheses, I've put is virtual. What I've done on that in-person column to kind of help you see visually, because I'm a visual learner myself, is everything that's in bold is what's happening when students are actually in the building during the in-person day. So when we get down to 1 o'clock to 3:30, you'll notice that that's not bold in any longer because now the students are dismissed and they're home. One of the things that we took into consideration when we were developing the schedules was staff contact with students. So when we talk about art, music, phys ed, media, world language, those are teachers that have contact with many students typically in a building. So an art teacher will see every student in a building throughout the week. And we know based on the safety guidelines that that's not what's being recommended. And we really wanna take into account in all of our decisions, of course, first and foremost, the safety of our staff and students. So what we have-- So, what we have decided is that the elementary specials, and I hate to use that word, because those are really dedicated content areas with their own content standards. But those art, music, phys ed, world language, media, those will be happening virtually for all students, whether you select the hybrid or the a hundred percent virtual option. So, the idea is that during that in-person day, when students are dismissed at twelve-thirty and then would be going home, there will be some type of a special scheduled in there. We've talked through how this could look a few different ways. It may be that the specials teacher, let's say on Monday, your child has art. It may be that the art teacher posts a brief lesson video that's pre-recorded and then maybe offers some type of live instruction during that afternoon piece. It could be a help session. It could be an extension activity. But there will be something that students will be able to attend live in the afternoon that relates to their special for the day. So, that's a look at what that in-person day will look like for students. And now, I'm just going to switch over here. And if you're looking at the columns here, now I'm going to go to the Group B virtual blue column there. And I just want to walk you through what it will look like when students have virtual days. So, eight-twenty to nine o'clock. And again, we're kind of buffering that. We don't think we'll need or need to allot forty minutes for this. But we did want to build into the schedule a time when our teachers could check in with students. As many of you know, we gave a survey in June to teachers and to parents and asked them what they really found useful in the spring, what was really meaningful for virtual learning, and what areas that we could still grow in. And one of the things that came through from teachers and parents alike was having a morning check-in live with the teacher. From the teacher's perspective, it sort of set the tone for the day. And from the parent's perspective, it gave the students a focus. And it kind of got them rolling and set for them a schedule of what the expectations were for the day ahead. So, we're imagining that we'd like the elementary day to still start with some kind of a live check-in. So, on those virtual days, maybe at eight-twenty, maybe at eight-forty, somewhere in that window, the teachers, we're going to ask them to check in with their virtual-only students. After that, the virtual students, who are virtual just for that day, again, who are choosing hybrid, would have posted activities and assignments in Schoology related to the work that they've done in-person and related to maybe some pre-recorded lessons that the teacher is also delivering. Again, with those survey results, one of the things that came through from teachers and from parents, and also in our task force meetings, honestly, is that the pre-recorded videos for elementary were really, really helpful, because a lot of the things that were delivered were delivered very quickly than the way that some of us have learned it. I know specifically, in some of the meetings, parents spoke to me about math and how it was really helpful, actually, to have a pre-recorded math lesson, because as parents, they could watch it with their child and they could rewind it or re-watch it if they needed to. And then, we thought it was helpful for students also, that if they weren't sure of something or if they got confused, they could rewind, they could slow it down, and they could re-watch it. So, really, during that time when students are home virtually, you'll see a combination of things. You'll see some pre-recorded lesson content. And you'll also see, similar to what you saw in the spring, where there are assignments that are related to concepts that are taught. On those virtual-only days, you will still, like we said, start the day with a live check-in. And then, you'll notice that from two to three o'clock, we do have an hour-long synchronous Google Meet. And by synchronous, we just mean like a live, in-real-time-happening Google Meet. What we noticed and what some of the teachers gave us feedback on was that planning for virtual learning is cumbersome. And it's helpful if you can keep, even in a cohort model, students learning the same things, more or less, within the same daily schedule. So, this may look like a condensed version of the lesson for the day that was taught in-person, for example, to the other cohort, is condensed into that two-to-three block. And then, the next time that cohort is in-person, it's expanded upon, if that makes sense. This schedule also helped us, because it built in some prep time for teachers as well. So, we have teachers from one to three-thirty having a lunch and then having time to check in with their virtual students while the students are dismissed and then have their specials virtually. I also want to just talk briefly about the Wednesday All Virtual Day. So, this is a day when all students will be virtual. There'll be no students coming into the building. And we're going to be using it specifically for some really targeted things that we think are really important. So, if you look at this schedule and you think about the classroom culture, you're seeing a lot of the cohorts completely separate, which is what we want for safety reasons, right? But there really aren't any times for the class to come together as a whole, where you would see all twenty students. And so, we were imagining that that Wednesday would be a nice time to have some kind of a whole-class community meet. I know our teachers did this in the spring with their students. Many times, they would do games, like a bingo game or a show-and-tell or something similar to that. That was just fun and a good way to community build. So, that's something that will happen on Wednesday. But there will also be really targeted instruction that happens on Wednesday also. So, you'll see from nine to twelve-thirty. And again, this may, this may be more accurately reflected in just saying nine to three-thirty, that both of those things will be happening, the small group instruction and the counselor hours. So, basically, for the rest of the day on Wednesday, teachers will be meeting with small groups. You may have seen this in the spring, depending on a student's reading level or a student may need help with a specific math concept or may need to be challenged in some way and pushed forward in the curriculum. So, those small groups would meet on Wednesday. And Ms. Gurkans, our Coordinator of School Counseling, is also working with our school counselors to offer counselor hours during that day. So, drop-in hours for any students that would like to talk. Of course, they can reach out to their counselor at any time, but this would just be a set time in the schedule for that. Okay, I think we can go to the next slide, Ian. Thank you. So, this is the kindergarten hybrid schedule. I had the pleasure yesterday afternoon of meeting with, I want to say, over two hundred of the kindergarten parents who came to a kindergarten information session that we ran. And it was really, really helpful to show them a graphic that just related specifically to kindergarten, because it is a little bit of a different structure. So, I'll just share that as well with you. So, our kindergarten structure, based on the New Jersey Department of Education guidelines, kindergarten is required to have two-point-five hours of instructional time daily. And instructional time, just so you know, and four hours is the requirement for the Grades One through Six also. But I'll just say that instructional time doesn't necessarily mean time face-to-face with a teacher or in front of a screen. It's all of the things that fall under that instructional time. So, any assignments related to that work as well. So, in thinking about the two-point-five-hour requirement for kindergarten, we had a lot of discussions around the best way, what's developmentally appropriate for kindergarten and really the best way to make use of that time. And so, what we've done here is we've continued with the best practice of using cohorts. But instead of doing a cohort and alternating the different mornings that students attend, we're able to offer the kindergarten students either an AM or a PM cohort. And those kindergarten students would be able to attend four of the five days during the week for live instruction. So, you'll notice here, if your child, your kindergartner was placed in the AM cohort, they would attend from nine till eleven-thirty. You'll notice we're staggering the start time a little bit to allow for all of our entrance procedures and things like that. So, starting at nine is helpful for us in that way. So, from nine till eleven-thirty, the AM kindergarten students will attend in-person. And then, from twelve-thirty to three, the PM students will attend in-person. Even in kindergarten, we are still leaving that Wednesday as a virtual day for all, because as Kent mentioned, there is a chance always that we're going to have to pivot to a hundred percent virtual. So, one of the things that our leadership team spoke a lot about when thinking about the kindergarten schedule was valuing the in-person instruction and liking the idea of having that in-person instruction as much as possible, in this case, for mornings or afternoons a week. But then, also thinking, if we do have to go a hundred percent virtual, how prepared are those students going to be? Especially being in kindergarten with their ability to navigate things like Schoology, more or less, in an age-appropriate way. So, Wednesday, we are keeping as a virtual day for kindergarten as well. The activities that would happen during Wednesday are really similar to what I mentioned in Grades One through Six. So, there'll be drop-in counselor hours. There'll be small group instruction and that sort of thing. As far as art, music, phys ed, and media, again, because we want to limit the contact time of these teachers to students, they will be still taught virtually. And they'll either be taught, depending on the way the schedule finalizes in each building, it may be on a Wednesday that some of the specials find time to meet. Or it may be that if your child, let's say, is in the AM cohort, during the PM time, there may be a special that they can attend. And that could either be a pre-recorded lesson. It could be a live help session. It could be an extension activity or any of those options. I do just want to say, before I turn the presentation back over too, that another thing that we're working on is providing at-home learning kits for students. So, I'm working with the content coordinators and our principals to think about what instructional resources, especially on the elementary level, would be helpful for students to have at home. So, we're working on things like printing out some cardstock of some math manipulatives, for example, that we'll send home, that you can cut out and keep in a Ziploc bag and use during some of the virtual lessons. Also, for our younger learners in Grades K-one, Two, we have a multisensory phonics program called Foundations. And we're working on getting cardstock of the different letter tiles, for example, that you can keep in a little bag at home. And just to make the lessons a little bit more interactive. And now that we, you know, have time to prepare, whereas in March, we sort of had to go out in an emergency situation, we're starting to think about what would make sense for you all to have at home to support you. Because I know on the elementary level, a lot of this work you're doing alongside your child. And we really appreciate your partnership in that. That's all I have on the elementary side. Just want to thank everyone for coming out and listening to the plan. And again, at the end, I'll ask you questions as well related to elementary.
And I want to thank you, Kent and Janine, for a very broad presentation. I know you put a lot of time into it. I want to thank the parents who have, I know, been calling you, interacting with you and Dr. Glazer. We just came off a five o'clock meeting with quite a few concerned parents, which is good. I would encourage my board members, since this plan has been visible to us for the last four, five, six days, to reach out to Janine, reach out to Kent, reach out to Dr. Glazer, and get some of these answers that the parents are asking us, so we are better prepared. Dr. Glazer?
Thank you. Sorry, I'm trying to read the chat at the same time as I'm trying to answer all of you. And thank you for everybody who is writing questions in the chat as we're speaking. As you can see, I wasn't kidding when I told you that a tremendous amount of time and effort and work and thought has gone into this draft plan. One of the questions that I've seen consistently is why we aren't starting virtually? If this is a phased-in plan, why aren't we starting virtually and then building to the cohorts instead of starting with the cohorts and then perhaps, you know, adding more? And so, in our phased model, I want to be clear, again, we are meeting the mandate of the Department of Education. We have been charged by the Governor and Commissioner, well, then Commissioner Repalet, to open in some capacity in September. And while I know in the news that you see Jersey City or Trenton, today Elizabeth, some other districts who are saying that they are not able to do this and that they're opening virtually, we don't have a waiver, we don't have an opportunity to make that choice. And I will tell you that we have asked the attorney, we've spoken to the municipality and to the, to the department. I will say to you all that the effort we've put into this is specific to being able to look at the health and safety of every staff member and every student. I know that some of the concerns are that it is shortened days, right? That it is till twelve-thirty. I know that some of the concerns are that it's a limited number of days of the week. And again, partially, it's due to the fact that we are constrained by limited capacity. You know that we're at fifty percent capacity. And actually, last week, the Governor limited to twenty-five people indoors. We are constrained by our facilities. We only, and this is not a secret. You've heard us talk about our enrollment, our overcrowding as far as space goes and as far as our programs go. So, when we are looking at the number of students we're able to bring into a classroom, keeping, as Mr. Bania said, those social distancing guidelines, making sure that we're able to do the hand-washing protocols, making sure everyone is wearing a face mask. We are constrained. We're looking in some classrooms of twelve people, maybe thirteen people. But as, again, you've heard us speak for a long time, we have a number of instructional spaces, small group instruction spaces, that were not intended for this kind of instruction and that we are trying to make do with those smaller group sizes with the social distancing. I will say that our phased model does start small. And it's our hoped-for outcome that all of the health and safety protocols and routines and guidelines that we're able to put in place allow us, the same way the state of New Jersey has allowed us, to keep the trajectory flat. That we would be able to add additional hours or days, depending on the number of people that we're able to include in the actual physical spaces. So, again, I understand that sometimes you're reading things in the news or hearing things on social media. But we are doing our very best to follow the mandates as well as keep the health and safety in place. I want to, before we start going through the chat and answering questions, really acknowledge all of you. To have two-hundred-and-fifty people on a call is spectacular, when we usually have maybe twenty at the most. It's spectacular. And I want to say to you that the same way we're constrained in other places, we're constrained on this call. Two-hundred-and-fifty is the limit of the number of people that are able to participate live. We understand, I've been getting texts constantly. I'm sure other people have as well, that they are not able to enter the meeting or to ask their questions. Please know that Mr. V Meister will have the video of this meeting, including the chat, posted immediately after the meeting. And I will commit to you, as I always do, you have my email, Ian. Put it back in the chat again. Email me if you're watching this on video later and have a question. I will make a commitment to you that you will get an answer. And as far as the questions that are asked tonight, we will work our way through the questions and answer. I know that between myself, Kent, and Janine, some of the questions have already been answered, but we'll keep going. I also do want to say that our Board of Education as a whole has been part of the development of this plan. I, you know, Charlie talked about the meeting he was in earlier today. I'm going to say to you that our board members have been involved in the task force, have been involved in the development of everything that we've done to date. And I hope that if there are board members that do have questions or concerns, you take advantage of the access that you have to all of us, as Mr. Kazinsky said. And please make sure you have your concerns known. I'm not sure we'll be able to alleviate all of the concerns. Quite frankly, the reason that we have a draft, the reason that this continues to evolve... Quite frankly, the reason that we have a draft, the reason that this continues to evolve is because we continue to get guidance almost on a daily basis. We continue to have changes to the CDC guidelines or amendments to the, um, American Association of Pediatric Guidelines or the State of New Jersey Department of Health Guidelines daily. And we continue to respond to each of those changes, and we continue to, again, do our best to keep our priority, and I do mean this, the health and safety of our staff and students. We're here for education, our role is education, our expertise is curriculum instruction and assessment, but health and safety has to remain our priority. I'm going to just scroll through these questions, but then-
Dr. Glazer, I think, I think, Dr. Glazer, I probably should read our hearing of citizens portion right now before we start taking chats or discussion, because I think it's got to be part of a record, okay?
Absolutely.
We now come to the portion of our meeting where we allow members of the public to address the board, and this section, we allow questions or comments on resolutions only. Uh, and the resolution we're talking about is the opening of school draft plan that's been discussed. Our Board of Regulations, number 0169, allow 20 minutes for these communications. Each person shall be limited to three minutes, and we ask you to try to stay within this requirement. And specifically, Ian, you need to do me a favor again and back me up. I would like to try to maintain that three-minute time for as many people as we can to get through the session tonight. Um, speakers may speak more than once, only after others wishing to speak on a topic have been heard. All statements will be directed to me as the chairperson, no one may address board members individually. Please be reminded that if your statement is too lengthy, abusive, obscene, irrelevant or redundant, your participation may be terminated. Please remember to state your name and address each and every time you address the board. Who shall be first?
Mr. President?
Oh, sorry.
Hold on, I'm not, I'm not going to, like I mentioned at the beginning, I'm not going to accept board members' discussions now until after the citizens have their voice.
And Mr. Kazinsky, that my question is, do we, do we have a number of people that have written in the chat since the beginning of the meeting? Do we go through that, um, and then call on people? Or we already have people who have raised their hand to speak and call on those people? I really, I'm not sure what protocol you want.
My opinion is, since the chats are out there, and I've looked at most of them, they're going to, a, a lot of those are going to answer some questions that people have. I, me personally, I think we should go through the chats first, if that's fine with everyone.
And Mr. President, can I speak briefly?
Mr. Carnesella, I really didn't want to entertain board members until the citizens have their voice.
I just want a clarification on the 20 minutes, that we are, that we are not going to be held to that 20 minutes, because it's very clear in the statement that we're only going to allow 20 minutes for this conversation.
Yes, you're right, actually, good point. Very good point, thank you very much. We are not going to be held to the 20 minutes. We, we are here at your disposal, citizens, to get as much done as we can tonight. Um, so we're here for the duration. Thank you, Mr. Carnesella.
All right, so, um, scrolling through, as far as the decision goes to, for parents in the real-time portal, um, parents have been asked to choose either an in-person hybrid model or 100% virtual model in the real-time portal, their child's parent portal by Friday. It is our hopeful outcome that we can answer all of your questions this evening. And again, if you're watching this on video later, that you email, um, me your questions so that we can make sure that you get an answer, so you can make an informed decision. Um, we do need to have a deadline, because we are not able to schedule, we're not able to do our staffing, we're not able to make a final decision on childcare until we know, um, what parents' decisions are. I will commit to you, I know if you've reached out to me, I've already made this commitment, if you've made a decision and want to change your mind by Friday, you can do that in the parent portal, either way. Um, what you see in the plan as far as changing your mind is after you've made that commitment and after school starts. So that, just when I see those comments, I want to make sure that everybody has a clear understanding of what it is that we're asking you to do, and that you understand that we are committed to answering your questions, so that you can make that informed decision. Um, let's see. I'm just going to go right through these. Cheryl Lynn Gonzalez, um, if you could unmute and tell us your, um, address, please, and then we'll go through your question.
Okay, good evening, my address is 423 Stennis Street, Nutley.
Great, thank you, welcome, thanks for hanging in there with us. Um, I know you've asked this question a couple of times, so I want to make sure I answer it. I'm not going to answer it the other times in the chat, but I promise I saw it, so thank you.
Okay, thank you so much.
Question for everybody listening is for students with one-to-one PERS, how are the students being supported virtually? Also for students who have in their IEPs a portion of the day to be integrated with general education, such as my soon-to-be, sorry, soon-to-be third grader does, how will we receive his 45 minutes of reading with paired in his general education class? So first of all, let's talk about your one-to-one PERS. Um, in the spring, there wasn't a, a true opportunity for them to be involved, because those paraprofessionals did not have a dedicated device, um, that would allow them to do that. Mrs. Doyle Moreno is one of, she's our Director of Special Services, and one of the people who must have been either 251 or 252. So she cannot answer that, um, for you directly, otherwise she would. Um, but in all of our conversations, that the need for devices for the PERS to be able to assist the students under the direction of the teachers is clear. Um, we are hopeful that because we were able to get additional funds for the Digital Divide Grant, that we're able to add to the number of Chromebooks that we have in the district, and that we'll be able to support our paraprofessionals, um, so that they're able to fully participate as well. We know a number of them made the choice on their own to use their personal devices or their, um, their personal phones to keep in touch with their students, and we are, we care that they care, um, but we do need to be able to protect, right? What, what your confidentiality and your, um, the work that your paraprofessional does with your student. So that, that's what we're looking at to be able to, um, to do, and we're still working on that. As you can imagine, most of these expenses, when I talk about policy and funding, most of the expenses are, are unbudgeted expenses. So we really need to make sure that we're reallocating all of our resources the best we can to be able to support the first phase, right, of this in-person hybrid? And as we grow, right, to either more hours or more days, um, make sure that we can support that financially as a district, to be sustainable. As far as the second part of your question, um, how is the, um, the work integrated, right? The, the time that you're in general ed?
Right, we get 45 minutes. Yes.
So again, we're only scheduled for the two half-days, and that integrated would be scheduled into the two half-days. We would continue to work, um, with the teacher, continue to follow the IEP to make sure that your child gets, um, what they need to get, either in those in-person days or supplemented virtually.
That's the question, though, for in-person days, is my child going to walk over to the general ed classroom?
No, so, so again, this is a real challenge. We're trying, you know, and know as part of all of these conversations.
That actually determines whether if I go 100% virtual or not, you know?
Right, we've tried very hard to keep, um, the cohort model. And when it comes to special education, it's a real challenge for resource replacement, it's a challenge, um, across the board. And, um, I'm very fortunate to be part of an Essex County Cohort of Superintendent. Mrs. Doyle Moreno is very, um, fortunate to be part of a roundtable of special educators. And as we look at this model, we're still trying to minimize the contact that students and staff members have. Um, we believe it would be, um, a push-in model or a pull-out. We, we have to be able to, in the context of movement through the hallways, in the context of the number of children in the classroom, and the number of children that the teachers have contact with and vice versa, keep it safe. So-
Dr. Glazer, I, again, I, I appreciate the conversation. Mrs. Gonzalez, I appreciate your conversation. I, I hope we can continue this conversation with Helen Doyle, who would help us out. I, I do want to try to move through, um, many more-
I'm just assuming, we have about 14% of our student population that are special education have some version of, um, an IEP or an individual learning plan. So I figured if I took enough time, um, with the first question, I might answer, I might answer some of the ones there.
That's a really good point, thank you.
Yeah, I just figure the most I can answer, the better off we are, um, because we are trying to help people make a decision, right? We want people to know what they're getting in person, what they're getting virtually, and what might be supplemental. And, and I do want to say that as well for everybody. I know we keep talking about extra hours or extra days, but one of the things that we're committed to is looking at individual education plans, right? Looking at individual IEPs and trying to make sure, um, not only that we can meet the IEPs, right, but if, for individual students, if there's a way to bring them in more often, or if there's a way to add the number of days for those students sooner, that we're able to do that.
Okay.
All right?
Thank you. We'll take another chat, can we take another chat, Dr. Glazer?
I, I'm just scrolling down, a lot of things are from the beginning, asking about the postponement of August 14th, and I've already addressed that. So, um, I am still going, more clarification on students with IEPs, hopefully, um, I was able to do that. Um, let's see, still going, the plan's posted online. Thank you, Ms. Messina, for also sharing that link. Um, everybody should have received it individually in their email as well. Um, let's see. Again, these are still all questions from the, the beginning of the meeting, so bear with me while I scroll through.
Dr. Glazer, I did see a, oh, I'm sorry, I did see a whole bunch that were asking about the 100% virtual option. Is that something you'd like Mr. Bania and I to just speak about? I think there was, was quite a few about that one.
I might not be there yet, I'm, I'm only a quarter to seven in the chat, so, please, please feel free while I'm scrolling down. Either one of you?
Yeah, I was talking about the 100% virtual option. So 100% virtual students would be, um, engaging in live Google meets with their teacher. Um, it would usually look like something similar to what I discussed of, of the virtual learning day, where students are not in person. So a Google meet in the morning, where the expectations are set and the daily schedule is reviewed, and then the rest of the day would consist of a variety of things, included pre-recorded lessons, assignments, um, and then there would be a live Google meet with some live instruction as well. So very similar to what the virtual schedule would look like for the hybrid students.
Yeah, at the secondary level, it would be an integration of, of everything that hybrid students are doing, um, except their, uh, teacher connection time would be in the form of the structured, uh, two hours at the middle school and, uh, the drop-in office hours, as well as, uh, teachers, um, meeting with students on their different periods throughout the day. Be a little more informal, but they would have, uh, that support as well at the high school.
Thank you, Dr. Glazer.
Yep, so, um, Emily DeBon, or, if you could please unmute and share your, um, address.
That was my wife, 30 Pauline Drive.
Thank you very much. So the question is, West Orange is proposing physical present for some students and staff, which seems like it fits in with Governor Murphy's definition of being physically in school. So I'm very fortunate to work closely, um, with the superintendent in West Orange, and they are doing a modified plan. They're bringing in their special education students, their English language learning students, and their, what's called, um, Response to Intervention, RTI, tier-three students, on a daily basis. They're opening their buildings the rest of the time for virtual, um, and the buildings are open for virtual, um, with their staff, um, being able to deliver that instruction as a means to also provide a version of childcare. And they're using their busing in a really, I think, creative way, um, to be able to bring the other students back into the district later in the day or at other times for, um, extracurricular activities, and if we still have them, sports. And it does meet, um, the definition of being physically present in school. Our model, now that you've listened, and I, and I know it's, it's been a while since you put the question in the chat, I think we also do the same to address our special, um, education students, our English language learning students. I think that we are also, um, being mindful of, um, the time for the virtual learning as well as the extracurriculars. But if you have something else to, to add, since, since you put your question in, please unmute and-
That's, that's okay, I'll, I'll relay, I'll relay that to her, thank you.
Thank you, and thanks again for asking the question. And again, Juliana Sandoval, we, I think we may have answered, um, the first parts of your question, but if you could unmute and share your address, that would be helpful, and then we'll work your way through the, the second pieces. Juliana, are you still on the call?
All right, let's move on, Dr. Glazer, please.
Um, I will. Um, I just, I think that we did answer the English Language Arts and Math question on the two days. Um, as far as the extended day, I'm going to ask all of you to close your eyes and envision childcare, not your picture of extended day. We are not going to be able to have children, um, playing all together in the gym or, um, in the auditoriums together, right? Um, when we're offering childcare, it's really to extend the school day for the working parent. It'll give us, um, an opportunity to help you, an opportunity for our students to, whoops, sorry, maybe have some support, um, with that virtual part of the day. We'll make sure that, again, there is, um, an outdoor, um, opportunity, if we can provide this, for lunch and for structured outdoor time. Excuse me. As far as the morning care, it is really challenging. It's not just about the temperature checks, and I'll, and I'll talk about the temperature checks and the screening forms. Um, you have to look at the timing of it. Now that you've heard Mr. Bania and Mrs. Locan Solo talk about what that morning looks like for staff, you, you have to understand from our safety and security standpoint, we're not just using one entrance, right? We can't just use the one secure entrance. We're going to need to be able to assign students to a door, we're going to need to be able to have staff, um, at that door to monitor not just social distancing and the wearing of masks, but to make sure, sorry, parents, that you're not congregating, that we are keeping, um, up with the stop, drop and go at the elementary level. We are going to be doing daily temperature checks. Our medical professionals and our, um, local and county health nurse felt very strongly that, um, we needed to take control of that, that unfortunately, over a long period of time, they've seen, not, not with COVID necessarily, but with the flu and colds and strep throat, that students are sent to school with a temperature, um, with Tylenol or Benadryl. We do not want a student spiking a fever if we can help it after they're already in our school buildings. Um, as far as the screenings, the screenings will take place at home before the screen, screening, boy, I'm struggling, the screening, um, questions will be about symptoms, they'll be about exposure to COVID, they'll be about travel to any of the, today, I think there are 31, um, other states where you're required to quarantine for 14 days before you return. We are hopeful, um, that that form will be available in our parent portal for it to be completed on a daily basis, and in our, um, staff system, our, um, Apple Track system for our staff, that's, so that's done on a daily basis. But to be able to do breakfast in the morning, right, to be able to do that outdoor breakfast for our free and reduced lunch students, to take the temperatures, to be able to stagger the entry into the buildings at different entryways, different stairways, to minimize the number of students interacting in the hallways, it's just not possible to do the morning care, and I'm sorry.
Thank you, Dr. Glazer. Mr. DePizzi, can you do me a favor, please, and take a roll call to board members- Mr. DePizzi, can you do me a favor, please, and take a roll call of the board members?
Yes, sir. Mr. Cornesella?
I'm here.
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin?
Here.
Mr. DeMaio?
Here.
Mr. Ferrara?
Here.
Mrs. Quirk?
Here.
Mr. Riley?
Here.
Mr. Scholera?
Ms. Zaro?
Here.
Mr. Kozinski?
Thank you very much. Dr. Glazer, you're up again.
We have some repeated questions, and that's okay. Repeated. So Paula Miller, if you wouldn't mind unmuting and sharing your address?
All right, Dr. Glazer, all due respect, we'll give them a certain amount of time, and then we're going to have to move on.
I know how hard it is to find that.
I know.
I always figure I'll give somebody.
If that person comes back, we can certainly fit her in.
I'm going to answer anyway. Paula has been one of the community members that's been active in the task force. The question is, what's meant by as long as the request can be honored? Please allow two to three business days for this change, moving from in-person to virtual to be effective. This is a question related to the policy, the virtual learning policy. It is on page nine of the draft plan as well. So I will say that we had a lot of discussion about this in the policy, and what it relates to is students that choose the in-person hybrid model deciding to move to an all-virtual model. I don't know, we have every member of our policy committee with us and our chair, Erica, Mrs. Zaro. I am happy to give the clarity, but I want to give you the opportunity in your role to do that.
Hi, I'm here. So the way we discussed it yesterday, and Kent and Janine could correct me if I'm wrong, if you're switching from a hybrid to an all-virtual to allow us two to three business days to respond to the request, you'll submit it to the school principal, the principal will respond back, and then within a week or two, we should have them switch to all-virtual. If you're doing the opposite, if you're going from all-virtual to a hybrid, it's going to take more planning. So that we are asking for 10 business days to respond to the request, and then the child would be moved into the hybrid model the beginning of the following trimester. So either way, whether you made the request, let's just say in the beginning of October or in the middle of November, they still would not go into that hybrid model until the next trimester. In regard to the opposite way, like I said, that's a little bit quicker. The only thing we did put in there, just so everybody is aware, your homeschool could be Lincoln, and you will still be a Lincoln student. But if you switch from hybrid to virtual and all of the virtual cohorts and homerooms are filled at Lincoln, you could go into a virtual model at Spring Garden or at Radcliffe, but your homeschool will still be Lincoln. So when things, I'm not going to say if because I'm optimistic, when things go back to normal and, sorry, let me put my face on, when things go back to normal and we go back into school, you would return to your homeschool. So it would just be during the virtual time that you might go into a model in another school.
Thank you, Mrs. Zaro. Very, very, very clear. I appreciate that. And again, we all understand this is a plan in motion. So this is the way it is today at eight o'clock. It could be different tomorrow at eight o'clock. So we're all going through to get there. Thank you, Erica.
Thank you, everybody.
You're up again.
I'm just going to keep reading, but thank you, everybody. Will core subjects be recorded? Recording lessons, as Mr. Bania and Mrs. Locan Solo talked about, is just one strategy. I don't know if you have anything else you wanted to add. I think you covered it pretty well, but covered, covered? All right. So the current stock level of hand sanitizer and what inventory control is in place to ensure sufficient hand sanitizer available at all times? Well, I'm going to tell you that we have gone all in on hand sanitizer. I certainly wish I bought stock sometime back in February. I know Mr. Perigi was able to get into the call and can talk about the investment that we've made in hand sanitizer and for every classroom, hallway, high-traffic area. Michael, can you unmute?
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm sorry, what was the question again?
What's your current stock level of hand sanitizer? What inventory control is in place to ensure sufficient hand sanitizer at all times? And again, I know that you've talked about what's been ordered for every classroom without a sink and what's in the hallway, but if you could reiterate that, we have a lot of people on the call that may not have heard.
We have a shipment of sanitizer coming in probably within the next week or two. They're guaranteeing me the shipments. We are getting extra pump stations as well to have on hand, not just the ones on the wall. And I'm not going to say on a call that I have a guaranteed stock. It is an issue throughout the United States. I am on the phone from 6:00 AM till 10:00 o'clock at night, trying to procure stock of everything that we need, from gloves to masks, and sanitizer is on the top of the list. It's actually the number one item that we need to open up school, and we are working on it daily.
Can you just talk about that? I know that you purchased, what you purchased comes with learning materials, training materials, videos, real cute things and trade. So if you could just detail that a little bit, I do think parents would be interested.
Yes. For the grades, it's a new program with the sanitizer company. It's, they recommend from grades probably four to kindergarten, there's a program that comes with how to wash your hands, hand sanitizer, there's cute signs. And even in the beginning, they had a mascot that would come to the school and teach the kids. At this point, we can't do that in our district in the beginning of the year. Hopefully, we can, no, not hopefully, I'm also going to be optimistic that we will get to that point, that we can bring in all the information that they have to help us with the kids in sanitizing and hand washing. It's a great program, and we're going to implement as much as we can on the first day of school. There's going to be signs. It's geared towards the younger kids, but it's a great program, and everybody will be happy once it's implemented, fully implemented.
Thank you. Don't unmute yet, Michael. I have another question for you. But I will say that the hand washing and hand sanitizing is a key component, right? Of keeping everybody safe and healthy. And those hand washing and hand sanitizing protocols aren't just at elementary, they're for all the staff, they're all the way up to grade 12, and we will be doing training, even though people think that they know how to do it. We'll continue to do training on hand washing, sanitizing, and hygiene, and there will be time built into schedules for that to happen.
No, the hand sanitizing is secondary to hand washing. I want to make sure everybody understands that. Our hand sanitizer will be a supplement to washing your hands, and cannot stress that enough. Hand washing first, hand sanitizer second.
Thank you.
To DC recommendations.
And then, you know, some of our other procedures, just so everybody knows, one of the things that we are required to do as part of the restart and recovery plan is to develop a procedures and protocol handbook for cleaning and sanitizing. That comes under Michael's purview with his staff. He does all of the training around those protocols and brings in anybody necessary as far as the fobbers or the hand-free sanitizer. Those restroom procedures for students are going to be part of that, right? If you're a young man and you need to use the men's room, will there be plexiglass barriers between the urinals? We'll announce that to you before school. What's the hand washing protocol? The next question, Mrs. Cox and Susan, again, another strong member of our task force, while I'm talking about this, if you want to unmute, I'll give you a chance to say something in a second and to give us your address. But, you know, the question about who's cleaning desks and chairs between classes, the deep cleaning that happens every day, not just on virtual Wednesdays, but every day. Michael, can you talk a little bit about, give us maybe a preview of what's in that planning protocol for those cleanings?
Our standing operating procedure, SOP manual, will come out with more detail how we're going to clean for COVID. Our SOP on a normal daily basis is to disinfect the classrooms, the bathrooms, desks. And even before this started, our custodians were walking around on a daily basis, doing doorknobs when the kids came into school, touch points, they would clean the bathrooms at the elementary schools twice a day, once in the morning after the kids come in and once after lunch after the kids are done. And then the night custodians would clean the bathrooms again. We will have a manual, sorry, SOP of how we're going to clean the schools, and I'll have a pamphlet if anybody would like to see it. I don't have it completed yet.
Change every day.
It changes. I'm tired of saying that. I'm sure everybody's tired of hearing it, it changes every day. But we'll have an updated SOP of how we're going to clean, when, and with what chemicals we're going to use.
So we have, Susan, if you could, and just repeat your name and address and then your comments.
Susan Cox, C-O-X, and I'm at 226 Rutgers Place. My question, Michael, which is probably for you, is what are we going to do about the kids in middle school and high school switching classes? Like Ethan, my son, is going to get up and leave math and go to science, and somebody else is going to come and sit in that desk like three or four, I forget how many minutes it is in between. What happens there?
Okay. This is between the teachers and you, this, my, it's going to be cooperative cleaning. There is no way that one person or two custodian in a school.
Right.
So this is, again, it's not etched in stone, it's going to be part of our SOP that needs to be approved by the board and Dr. Glazer. Kid's going to grab a wipe and wipe his desk down before he says, I have three children. I would have my child wipe the chair down and the desk down, even if the custodian told me it was clean.
Right. Well, I agree with you. I'm just wondering about my teenage son and his friends.
Yes. It's going to be part of the SOP, the manual that we have in place. I have to get approval from the board and Dr. Glazer for that to happen.
And all I'm going to say, Susan, is the same way that we are expecting everybody to wear a mask, and we are expecting students to social distance, this will be a student expectation, and it will be part of the code of conduct, because it does affect every other student that they come in contact with.
Definitely.
Michael, Mr. Perigi, thank you very much for the work you've done to get us this far. I know it's an ongoing process, but I appreciate your team and what we've accomplished so far.
Lot more to go, Charlie, but we'll make it right, Mrs. Cox.
Thank you. I'm going to keep going. I'm actually, Terry Kay, if you can unmute and prepare to state your name and address, I'll come back to you. Mrs. Mir, we just really answered about changing classes, defeating that health and safety issue. We are with everybody wearing a mask and limiting the amount of time with passing time. The CDC guideline is less than six feet of space for more than 10 minutes without a mask. We are making sure that that passing time is limited. You heard Mrs. Cox just say three or four minutes. We're going to give them five. We're going to give them five, but they will be wearing masks. So that is one issue, and we will be cleaning in between. So I do just want to make sure that I reiterated that. Terry Kay, are you still on the call, unmuted? No?
And all due respect, we need to...
I'm fine, I'm going to keep going. So the question is, do we have detailed COVID data for Nutley from the Health Department? And the answer to that is yes. For, on a daily basis, from March until June, the Office of Emergency Management did publish every single day the number of cases, the number of deaths. They did publish that. The Board of Commissioners published on a daily basis, and our local Department of Health, first under Commissioner Rogers, currently under Commissioner Kelly, with our local health nurse, who is second to none. I hope you're listening, Patty, she's been on every call, Patty Cruz. They are the people that track the detailed COVID data for Nutley, and they're who do the contact tracing based on our screening. So if you have a question about that, email me or, again, the Department of Health in Nutley. You can find that on the township website. What is the plan? If a student or faculty tests positive, this is another question from Paula and Susan, and a second question, will the district be providing testing for staff and students? So this has been an ongoing conversation, pretty much in every task force meeting, in every administrator meeting, in all of my roundtable meetings. And it is, it has been challenging because the guidance is not clear, and there is no consensus, unfortunately, around this topic. So if you look in the plan, you will see that if a student or faculty member tests positive, the contact tracing goes into place from the Department of Health, and based on their guidance of exposure, the classroom would either be closed for 24, 48, or 72 hours. The 24 hours is supposed to have the classroom sit without anybody entering, not even a custodian to be into that space. In the second 24 hours, the 48 hours, that's where that room would be deep cleaned, sanitized and disinfected, all of the above. And then it's up to the Department of Health if students can come back that third day, 72 hours or after. And that is just one classroom. It's just where the exposure is, and we have to take our direction from the local Department of Health. Just for a point of information, if a school, not a classroom, but if a school reaches a 5% of positives, I do have to close that school. If the district reaches that 5% positive level, I do have to seek guidance from the Department of Health because that would require us to return to virtual learning. So still moving, can the teachers, while they're in class, I think this is for Kent and Janine, Jennifer Messina, if you'd like to unmute? Don't know if you're there, Jennifer? I see a new picture come up.
If you can, Mrs. Messina, if you could unmute, we can take your question.
I'm going to read the question, and if you can unmute and tell us your address, please do.
Oh, here I am.
Okay, hi, Jennifer, your name and address, please.
Okay, Jennifer Messina, 26 Evergreen Avenue.
And the question for everybody is, can the teachers, while they're in class, do video meetings to instruct the children who are on virtual days? The children need instruction, not just in assignments dropped for them to do on their own. Kent, Janine?
I can start, Janine, if you'd like. We considered this option early on in the process. Some districts are going to streaming their class. There are several concerns that came up to steer us in another direction. One was instructionally based. If we are live streaming from the class, that promotes a scan and deliver lecture-type instructional strategy. That may not be the best strategy for having students in person, finally. It may look more like...
Excuse me. If you don't mind, Mrs. Messina, you can mute now while we're discussing it because there's too much background noise. Thank you.
Yes, I was saying that, just based on instructional strategy, that may lead to a balance of managing the virtual students and the in-person students, and may take away from the instruction that's going on. Another would be devices and technology. We would most likely need to outfit many of our classrooms with not only cameras, but microphones to make it work effectively. And the third are, there are some different privacy concerns, and couple that with the fact that we received a lot of feedback about recording instruction and posting it for more of an asynchronous flexibility at home, moved us away from those strategies in the classroom. Janine, I don't know if you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, I'll just say on the elementary level, the days that the students are virtual in the hybrid model, they do have that hour in the afternoon of live instruction where they will be interacting live and getting direct instruction from the teacher, and they do still have that live Google meet in the morning that will set up the work for the day and expectations. So there will be live instruction going on every day, whether you're in a in-person day or in a virtual day in that hybrid model.
And the same for secondary. At the middle school, there'll be two-thirds, the remote students as well as the virtual students on those days, will have a structured time, half a... will have a structured time, a half an hour per class, as well as the high school would have some time as well for virtual mutes.
Thank you both. I'm going to try Fatima Mir another time. If you're there, Fatima, and can unmute for your address. I know we've asked some of your questions already. This is, is everyone going to be tested before the start of school, including kids? And I know that this was the question from Susan Cox as well. This again has been huge debate, right? You can go for a test and walking out of the testing site, you, you can be exposed again to COVID. And in Essex County, there are five testing locations where you can go for free testing. Your results are five to nine days. And you might be directed to have that testing by the Department of Health if through the contact tracing, it turns out that you are exposed. We have gone back and forth and back and forth on whether testing of staff and students will happen before we return to school September 8th. The original guidance was yes, everybody would be tested. And then the physicians and the State Department of Health said that that should not be a requirement because it'll take up to two weeks for the results and in that time of two weeks, people could be exposed in other ways. You would have a false sense of security that we are better doing our daily temperature checks and our daily screening of where people have traveled, where people have been exposed. And through that screening tool and contact tracing to require that testing if, if needed, based on the Department of Health. So Mrs. Mir, I see that you were able to unmute. If you could say your name and address, please.
Fatima Mir, 8 Denver Street. Well, here is the thing now, what, what, what about the people who are asympt, asympt, they, they don't have symptoms?
Yes.
They, they still have COVID. Are we exposing our kids or our staff to people like that? We don't know if they have COVID or not, but they could have and no symptoms and the temperature checks goes green and we are all happy, but we are endangering everybody else inside the school.
So again, I'm not a medical doctor. I take my advice from the experts. And you're right, there are a number of people that are asymptomatic, right? And then they, there is that possibility for community spread. But the testing, because of the fact that your test is only as good as that minute that you're tested, doesn't protect you. What I have been advised and what we're following is that what protects us is the constant use of face masks, the social distancing of six feet or more, the continuous hand washing or hand sanitizing. And if you are not feeling well, and I know you're talking about asymptomatic, but when you are not feeling well, any well, it could be anything. It could be a stomach flu. It could be anything that you are asked to stay home. And that is part of the screening tool. Symptoms are gone through every single day. And if you are experiencing even one of those symptoms, you are asked to stay home and there is no harm or foul, right? You're not penalized for staying home when you're not well. And that's true whether you're a staff member or a student. So our focus has to be on, again, the, the face masks, the hand sanitizing, the social distancing, and through contact tracing, if somebody is exposed, then they will have that test and that will give us additional information to build off of. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Glazer.
Terry Kay, you're getting another chance to unmute and give us your name and address. Terry's question is, why was special education in-person instruction reduced? And special education in-person instruction was not reduced. It, it is being offered at the, the same amount as other instruction. I think that I have both Helen Doyle Moreno and April Vidello were able to get into the call. I don't know if you want to share any additional information based on our phase in, based on our space, but nothing was reduced. Helen, April?
Maybe they might be better served to discuss it with them offline, but that's.
And again, I would refer you back to the phone because we have not reduced any services.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carson, for posting the link to Governor Murphy's reopening plan. Here's a, here's another curriculum question from Ms. Solari. If you want to unmute and be ready to share your name and address. If the district goes fully remote for everyone, will elementary students receive more live instruction than what's scheduled for just the virtual Wednesdays? And beyond that, Trinity Zhang, are the 100% virtual learners getting the same teachers? I think that was already answered, but Janine, if you could speak to, to both of those. The virtual instruction and if we go 100% virtual, would there be more, more live instruction than just Wednesdays?
Yeah, and I just want to clarify, the, the live instruction is not just happening on Wednesdays. The live instruction in the hybrid model is going to be happening daily. So imagine that your child is attending, let's say, in-person on Monday and Tuesday. On that Thursday, Friday, they still will be doing those live Google meets from two to three every day with their teacher and they'll still have a live Google Meet every morning as a morning meeting to set up the expectations for the day. But absolutely, depending on, you know, the, the mandate to go 100% virtual, the schedule may change slightly and you, you will likely be getting more live instruction. So that would be forthcoming, depending on when that schedule is released. And are the 100% virtual learners getting the same teachers? So we're still working on scheduling based on the response that we get from the real-time survey that you all are completing by Friday. The district has a couple of ideas in mind. One of them is clustering the virtual-only students into their own classroom. And one of them involves keeping them with their regular homeroom. So we're going to make those decisions based on the survey results and finding out what percentage of students are actually going to be coming in for the hybrid model and which percent will be 100% virtual.
Thanks, Janine. So Ms. Solari, are you there?
Yes.
So your name and address, and then if you have anything else, a follow-up.
Yes, Jenna Solari, 15 White Terrace. Thank you. Yeah, that was my question, that if, if the district was forced to go remote, would there be a separate plan or schedule for that?
Thank you so much. And Ms. Zhang? Ms. Zhang, are you still on the call? No, I'm going to keep. Nope, there you are.
I just, um, yeah, no, I'm here. I just like for the high school, just like for the virtual learning, like how are they going to have meaningful classroom discussions and how are they going to do advanced biology and honors English and still have a meaningful experience if I'm not sending her to school twice a week?
Would you just do me a favor and state your address?
Oh, yes. 434 Posey, again.
Perfect. Thank you. Mr. Bania.
Yeah, I can answer that question. So we've learned in the springtime, especially at our high school with the, the learners we have there, that they were the best suited for the independence of our remote learning. And the students that would go 100% virtual would be supported by their teachers in the afternoon time, as well as throughout the day, based on teachers' prep periods to set up individual meetings to move them further in the curriculum. Most of the work for the class will still be posted online and the difference being that students will come in for in-person, in-person strategies. Those strategies will be conducted in the afternoons and scheduled as appropriate with the students.
Thank you. Any, any follow-up, Mrs. Zhang?
No, thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm not sure, and I'm so sorry, I, I can't pronounce your last name, Christina Kuriasis, maybe?
You said it very well. Thank you.
Thank you. Your address, please, and then I'll say your question.
Okay, I'm at 739 Bloomfield Avenue in Nutley.
Thank you. And the question is, how will splitting up the day extend the school year if they're only learning half of what they need? And I do think that's a misnomer, so we'll give an opportunity to, to, to answer that.
I, I can start to answer that. We've started the process of working with our curriculum experts, our coordinators in district, as well as our teachers, and something we call compacting curriculum. And that is looking at our curriculum documents and pulling out the most essential things that overlap and extended different areas. And we are actively now shifting to instructional focus and looking to make the most out of the instructional plan that we, we have. So we're looking to move further in the curriculum. I, I think you'll see the fall plans look much different than the spring plans where we understand and we have time to prep and go into expanding the curricular areas in these regards. So I don't want to say it'll look the same as a regular school year, but we are making every effort to assess students when they come in to see where they're at, to provide the key parts of our curriculum to move them forward and to keep assessing them as we progress with our hope that we are back in person as soon as we can for that traditional learning.
Okay, thank you. My son, who is going into middle school for the first time, his main question with all this and his concern is, he's going 100% virtual learning. So he has to wait the whole morning to start school in the afternoon. How is that going to look? Like, how many kids are going to be on a virtual chat for 30 minutes? Whereas the kids that are coming to school have 45 minutes. How are, how, how many kids will be on a virtual chat per class versus how many kids are in the classroom? And I guess the answer to that will help either allay his fears or make them even worse.
I do want to thank you for that question. That's a question we have not received before. So I'll do my best answer right now, understanding that our understanding is changing. But I, I would answer that with no more than two thirds would be on the class. So in a class of 25, you'd be looking at 15 or 16, I would, I gather, that would be on that half an hour portion. I think the teacher will have a structure where they will bring students in, go over the key learning components, and then also have an ability to pull small groups or meet students for extra help when they need that. So that is how we hope to provide instruction for the students that are not in school on that day.
So to understand, there'll be less kids in the classroom and they will get 45 minutes and there will be more kids on a virtual lesson and they will get only half an hour?
Yes, that's, that's the day we have right now, yes.
Okay. And for the 100% virtual learners, they're basically waiting every single day till the afternoon, especially in the beginning of the school year, to learn what it is that they need to. So they can't really do an assignment until they meet with their teacher if they're learning it for the first time. So they basically don't start their day till the afternoon? Is that what I'm understanding?
It would be more flipped. The morning would be more flexible for them where they'd have assignments and things to complete. And then they'd have a feedback cycle, meeting with the teacher in the afternoon where they can go over new learning. They can get feedback as to their assignments and things of that nature.
Okay.
There's more additional time that may be needed for the students that are 100% remote.
And you didn't hear before, because this was from a student's perspective, not that the parent would have thought of this.
And it is much appreciated. It is much appreciated because it makes.
What did it say? More students, the better.
Yeah.
And it is kind of a strange thought, right, that it's flipped. So you're going to meet with your teacher in the afternoon, but the next morning you have to do all of your, your work so that you're ready to have that feedback, right? You're ready to be able to discuss your assignment. So it's, it's a little bit flipped, but still meaningful.
Okay. Uh, thank you very much for your time.
I really do very much. Thank you.
Thank you. So Mrs. Navarez, and again, I'm so sorry if I'm messing up your name. I don't mean to. And I hope if you correct me, I'll get it right the next time. But Mrs. Navarez.
Sure.
Ms. Pereira, I believe we've already answered your actual questions, but please state your name and your address. And if there's something we missed in answering your question, that would be the time to ask.
Sure. This is Sue Hane Navarez. I'm at 21 Freeman Place. You did answer the first part. I did have a follow-up question later down in the feed, which is if, you know, my, my, my main concern here is the, the lack, the potential lack of instruction, teacher-led instruction for the virtual-only students. So is there a possibility to record? At least the, the, the really strong, the, the core classes, the math, the ELA. I know it's 60 minutes being devoted to math, 90 minutes being devoted to, to ELA for the in-person. Is it a possibility to record those lessons and then have them for afterward viewing for the virtual-only students? So they can learn what the lesson is and then thereafter do the, their assignments that are allotted to them?
Janine, I think this is an elementary-based question I can answer, but I want to answer.
Yeah, and I, I think it seems like it's relating to the 100% virtual schedule, which, which likely will have a 100% virtual dedicated teacher. So in that schedule or in that model, there may be more, probably more live instruction than just that single hour for the hybrid model. So if you have a dedicated teacher who's 100% virtual, those live sessions could be happening throughout the day, whether it's whole class or small group.
That's really helpful to know. Thank you. Okay.
You're welcome. Thank you. And Jessica Pereira, I think we also answered yours. How much of the remote learning will be live instruction? Is there a sample daily schedule for remote learning? I know that Kent and Janine both detailed that and talked about the minimum of four hours instruction, grades one through 12 and two and a half for kindergarten. But please, if you're there, unmute, state your name and address, and if you have a follow-up.
Hi, yes. Jessica Pereira, 153 Alexander Avenue. Just a follow-up, is there going to be a required number of minutes that are live instruction? Or is it going to be up to the teacher's discretion if it's just like, you know, a five-minute Google Meet in the morning versus a 25 minutes? Or is there any uniformity to how that's going to be delivered?
Yeah, thank you for that. We got a lot of parent feedback on that from the survey and the task force. And that's why we're trying to delineate in the schedule specific times for when those live meets were happening to be more consistent. Yeah, so, so there will be a more consistent schedule.
All right. Thank you very much. Ms. Negron, I think that we answered the one-to-one aid question. As far as how your child's IEP will be implemented, again, I know that we said this prior, but you're going to hear individually, right, about your child's individual IEP. If you have a question about choosing the hybrid model or 100% virtual model, I would encourage you to reach out to your case manager. Again, Mrs. Doyle Moreno and Ms. Vidello are on the call, but I'm not sure that they can give any more information about an individual IEP.
Dr. Glazer, excuse me, why are you still going through it? I, I know you might have mentioned it, but Friday is the cutoff time when we need to be notified by the parents of what
Yes.
what class they're going to take. So we might just want to mention that.
Yep. So I will say again, thank you and thanks for sticking in with us. I know, I know that it's been about two hours at this point and we're happy to still have over 200 people on this call. I'm pretty impressed. So Friday is the deadline for you to go into the parent portal on real time and choose either in-person hybrid instruction or 100% virtual instruction. You need to make that choice for each of your children. If you don't make that choice by Friday, just so you know, we will be forced to put you into in-person hybrid as long as we have the space to do that. But we really do want everybody to have a choice. If you're watching this on video later, which you very well may be, I do know that Mr. V Meister is sending out a reminder with instructions on how to access that parent portal. So in case you, you lost that email or you forgot the deadline, we'll make sure that we remind you and give you another opportunity to do that tomorrow, Thursday, and Friday. So Ms. Carson, another one of our task force members, Leilani Carson, if you're still on the call, if you could unmute and share your name and address. This is a question about high school students from Mr. Bania.
I'm sorry, I cannot see the question, so can.
I'm sorry. Yes. Why are the high school students who are virtual getting no structured instruction?
It's not that they're getting no structured instruction. It's, it's in the afternoon and it's at the discretion of the student and teacher to come up with that structure, to come up with the timing for the, what's missed in the in-person. So with that number and with the idea that high school students tend to be more independent, more geared toward remote learning and the scheduling of the high school, it looked that the best situation by all stakeholders was to provide the time for teachers and students to meet and let them structure that time.
Thank you. I don't see Ms. Carson unmuting, so I'm going to keep going. Ms. Sarno, I believe we answered your question of the number of minutes of live instruction and. and virtual. Ms. Cox, I think we also answered this question. If we can go to Google Meet, if we pivot, I love that word, to all virtual, why did we give up on the idea of Google Meet being the vehicle for whole class in and virtual being live together in class? I don't think we did, and, and I do think that Mr. Bagna and Ms. Locan Solo addressed that, but is there any other clarification? Again, I know some of these questions are from more than an hour ago, so we, we do keep answering, but I want to make sure that everybody's satisfied.
Yeah, you, you've answered it. I just figured since so many other parents were bringing it up again as well, I would just reiterate that I, I did feel like it's sort of almost easier for the teachers. Best practice is to have the whole class together when possible. And other people were saying it, so I just wanted to say, hey, you know, we've, yeah, I, I wish we could do it, honestly. I feel like it would probably be easier for all you guys. It would be one class, one time, and it would be easier, but.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks. Let's see, Micah Bonafe.
Hi, how are you?
Hi, did I say-
Hi, my name is Micah Bonafe. I live at 506 Coventry Drive in Nutley, New Jersey, and I have a couple of questions. The first one is what are, what, what kind of benchmarks assessments will be used? And what would the grading policy look like? Also, did the district discuss the possibility of keeping the students that were together this year and having maybe the teacher move on to the next grade with those same students as a cohort? Because I think that that would be really helpful, especially with the, the health and wellness of the student and, and understanding the emotional needs that the kids are going to need, especially during this new school year and in transition to a new teacher. So if, if that was something that was suggested, I would highly recommend that. Also, for any students that do not adhere to the mask-wearing policy or social distancing guidelines, et cetera, will, will it be written in policy that these students will be automatically be removed from in-person instruction to remote learning? So my concern is that students that don't want to wear the mask, what are the disciplinary procedures for this? You know, you're not going to be able to go to the principal like normal. What is going to be the policy? Is there going to be written policy for this? How will this be handled? Thank you so much, guys.
I was going to say, we, those are great questions. There, you can see all of us smiling because, yes, we worked our way through them. I don't know who wants to start, Kent or Janine?
I mean, they're great questions, and they're, they're all, you know, all different areas. The first one, I think, Janine, was assessment, benchmark assessments coming in. I'll let Janine speak to some elementary, but in, in district, we have a battery of common assessments, benchmark assessments that we typically give in a school year, and that's one of the most important things we'll, we'll do as educators when students come in is, is take the temperature and see where they are in the curriculum and where they are in certain skill areas and-
And don't intend it on that taking temperature thing.
Taking the pulse, maybe is a good phrase to use. Janine, I, I think your question might be more geared toward, you mentioned looping kids with her, and that may, maybe more geared toward Janine. So Janine, if you want to answer that, that's fine.
Yeah, I'll just start with the benchmarking question as well for elementary. In the spring, we did utilize some of our regular assessments with students virtually. We had some of our early elementary teachers try to administer our DIBELS assessment, which is our dyslexia screener that's state mandated, and some of them were able to do that virtually. So we'll continue with that in the fall in a more structured way. We're also investing in an online tool that will allow us to use our reading assessment system. In the elementary level, we, we assess reading level using the Fontes and Penel A to Z continuum, and we did find an online resource that will allow us to do that remotely. So we are looking at how to use our benchmarks where, where possible, if there's also a website or something similar that could help make that more efficient. Your question about looping is a great question. We did have conversations about that with our leadership team. We really do value that social, emotional connection, and we talked about how it's very different coming into a new school year with a new teacher in this environment. When students went out in March, they had established relationships with teachers. It was, yeah, through the middle of the year, so they had a rapport with their teachers. And our teachers are going to work to be building that into their lessons in the opening weeks of school. Elementary teachers, you know, do that already. You know, there's a lot of routine building and things like that. But we are going to be conducting staff PD before school opens, and one of the things that we'll focus on is how to lay that emotional groundwork and that connectiveness even among students and with, with the teacher so that the learning can happen, because really that need needs to be met first and foremost. So thank you for that.
Thank you. And thank you to all of you parents that come next who answer each other's questions. I have to say, that's the beauty part of having an active task force and a lot of people who have read the plan. So thank you, and I'm going to, to roll right by that. But thank you again, Ms. Munson, Ms. Barbosa, all of you people who are answering each other's questions. I just love it. So what do kids do while they're waiting for the other students to get screened? Again, we're breaking up the, the groups. We're using multiple entry doors. They will be with their teachers to be brought in in a staggered way, so we can limit the number of people in the hallways and stairwells. And the handhelds, I don't know how to explain, they're, they're, hello, that's what I'm here for all night, whoever baby that is. You, you made my whole day, and that's why we're here, all of us on this call. Anyway, we were able to purchase the handheld infrared thermometers. They are, there's actually calibration and training for the staff that's doing the temperature taking, but it goes very quickly. It's, it's one forehead non-touch at a time, so we'll be able to line up socially distanced, masked on, and follow the, the teacher right in. That's the, I have to say, that's all new, because on Friday, we finally, we had the thermometers, but we finally got the health guidance of what they were expecting from us. So I'm glad to be able to share that, even if it's new. Let's see, do we have an example of how the classrooms will be set up? I have to assume you mean the fact that there is no furniture and that there are just desks six feet apart with perhaps a teacher desk or a table at the front and windows open. I, I'm sorry to say, I wish I thought to give you a picture. Our principals have taken pictures of what that looks like. But again, close your eyes with that, that creative visualization. I know you've all been in the classrooms since you were in school, at least for a back-to-school night or a PTO night. And if you can imagine the floor squares, right? Those little linoleum squares, they're actually a foot square. So imagine now desks all facing in one direction, six squares apart, six squares all the way around, the teacher table or desk in front of you, and again, windows open. And we'll do maybe for future calls and the rest of our task force meetings this week and next week, we'll try and add some pictures. Michael, thank you for sending me that picture. Unfortunately, I don't have a way to share it. I have a new phone. It is, it's a great picture, but I don't have a way to share it. Maybe send to Ian, and maybe Ian can post it. Thank you. We talked about what happens to 100% remote students during the times of in-person instruction, the ventilation, and the plans for classrooms that don't have appropriate ventilation. I will start with this, and maybe Michael Perigi, you can jump in. We've become experts in ventilation. I think I've been trained on all of the MERV filters and LEED standards for ventilations and filtering that needs to happen in public buildings. Our buildings are in fact very old. Our systems are old. However, there is a guideline for fresh air to circulate. I'm going to leave that for Michael to talk about, and we have actually been in every room in our buildings to make sure that that fresh air is there. There are actually three considerations. Look what happens when you give me information. I become like a whole new person. The, the most important thing that has to happen is fresh air, right? So wherever possible, our windows are going to be open. That fresh air needs to come into the classroom. Again, Michael will talk about the mechanical ventilation, but there's also, I think, a misconception about our air conditioning units. So air conditioning is actually known to spread germs and viruses. Those germs and viruses get dissipated throughout the air wherever that air conditioning blows. So in our classrooms that have air conditioning units, if they're window units or wall units, there needs to also be additional windows that can open for that fresh air. It can't just be a window unit and no other windows. Any rooms that don't have the ventilation, either the fresh air of open windows or our mechanical system that Michael will talk about, that may be even supplemented with other fans, we can't use those rooms. And that further limits our capacity to bring students into the school. Michael, do you want to talk about the mechanical ventilation and the 15% requirement?
Yes, all classrooms in the state of New Jersey have been designed for 15% fresh air at all times. This goes back to 1950s, I think. Our Nesbit units that are in the classrooms have outside air dampers that allow 15% outside air at all times. To supplement this, we will open windows. That's a recommendation of the CDC. Even in offices and spaces that have air conditioning, we're going to open up windows. The gym, for instance, over at Spring Garden, there's a newer unit. We don't need to open up windows that has outside air that is supplied and mixed into the, into the space at all times, as well as most of our classrooms and our spaces throughout the district. If there's a small instructional space, like what the high school and child study team room we investigated today, does not have any outside ventilation. It's a smaller closet that they kind of turned into a testing area. That will not be used. The door will be locked and nobody will use that space. We are identifying spaces, like Dr. Glazer said, that have proper ventilation, and we will use those spaces and the spaces that do not, we will not use.
Thank you.
You can see the classroom that Ian has put up on the screen. This is Spring Garden. This is a typical classroom. This is a little larger. We got 12 desks in this classroom. As you can see, the six foot of spacing and six foot from the teacher as well. This is a good example of what most classrooms will look like.
Thank you. Michael, while you're unmuted, I know you told me that there's a website for this, and maybe Ian can add it in the chat, but Mrs. Marino is asking for the list of ingredients that are in products used for sanitizing. And again, I know there's a website for it, but-
I have it right off the top of my head right now.
Thank you, and we'll put that in the chat, Ms. Marino. Ms. Weber, I think we've answered this a few times, but we will not know what cohort your students are in before Friday. Unfortunately, we need to know how many in-person hybrid students and how many 100% virtual students to be able to, to make those class and teacher assignments. Let me keep going. Middle school advisory, advisory is still part of our program. Kent, do you want to talk about advisory?
Yes, I know, and talking with Ms. Egan, plan is to provide advisory in some capacity. It's still being developed as to what that will look like with student contact time and things of that nature.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Ms. Martone, the virtual learning website is active. It is the summer, so as far as getting a loner Chromebook for your students for the fall, I promise they will respond to you. You actually have three people on this call that, that monitor that website. I think that it's more a function of summer and numbers right now than not being responsive. Although if one of you who are on the call who monitor that website could just email Mrs. Martone or Ms. Martone so she knows that we received her request, I would appreciate that. Let's see, we already answered the second question from Mrs. Navarez. I think we also answered this, hybrid and 100% remote students with the same teacher question. I know that Mrs. Solari has this question, and it's would students at lower grade levels, will younger students be provided a device for virtual days if they choose 100% virtual? So we're working diligently on this. We did make sure that everybody has access to a device in the spring, and I know Mrs. Quirk spent hours making those follow-up phone calls to make sure that everybody did have a device and internet. Those people that found it was a challenge, right, because of one parent working or trying to share amongst students, I encourage you also to, to reach out to the virtual learning website. And Ian, if we could add that into the chat so people can find that. We are, we are trying very hard through the Digital Divide Grant, through some of our other funds, the PTOs, who have been incredibly generous to add to our device inventory, and we'll do our best to make sure that everybody has either a loner device or what they need to be able to participate. We talked about high school students switching classes with minimal risk. I can repeat that the time in the halls with the masks, less than six feet of distance for less than 10 minutes. We are staggering some of that time. Kent, is there anything that you'd like to add?
Just a clarification point. At our high school, it's four minutes of passing time right now, and at the middle school, it's five minutes. And again, we're taking the guidelines as they come in. You know, floors, hallways will be one-way where we can't do that. There'll be a line down the middle. We'll do everything we can in the guidelines to keep students safe and staff safe during that transition time.
Thank you. I think we've already answered what the 100% virtual schedule would look like. Kent and Janine both went through that, and we're happy to share. Ms. Bergen, if you need another view of that or the-
Well, Dr. Glazer, I think some, some comments are alluding to, will there be a structure, a district set of expectations for teachers for, for minutes and live instruction? And the district will provide expectations and guidelines for teachers at the elementary level if we are 100% remote. We will work. I'm sorry, go ahead.
All I was going to say is there will be a virtual learning consent form that details the roles and responsibilities of the district, the principal, the teachers, the students, the parents. So, so there will be for those people that choose 100% virtual, that consent form, so everybody knows what the expectations are. Are classrooms without air conditioning going to be used for in-person instruction? Well, since most of our classrooms do not have air conditioning, the answer to that is yes. We will have many, many classrooms without air conditioning that are used for instruction. Again, we do that now, windows open, supplemental fans, and we'll continue to do that. Again, I think we have the 100% virtual given live lessons. We've answered recorded lessons with closed captioning must be available. And this is a really important accommodation. We have students that are deaf and hearing impaired. We have parents that are deaf and hearing impaired, and we found that those accommodations are critical. Through Google Meet, we're able to close caption, but we've also been identifying with the IT department what other accommodations might be available to those families. And yes, must be available. We hear you. We hear you. Let's see. I think it's Ms. Malkian, I think. If it is, and if you're still on the call, go ahead and unmute to be able to share your address. But when are teachers going to know exactly what their schedules and expectations look like? Who's cleaning between the high school classes? How will teaching in-person and virtual students at the same time work for teachers? And again, I know Kent, Mr. Bagna, you talked about some of this, but I'm not sure if Ms. Malkian is, is on the call or-
Yeah, so as far as-
Hello, I'm Ian.
I'm, I'm sorry. I, I can begin to answer some of those questions, and I, I don't have in my chat, so I may ask you to repeat them, Dr. Glazer. But the first one is about teacher schedules. Teacher schedules are still, you know, we're, we're still moving things around, although they, they seem to be mostly set. We are still just admitting new students to our district and other things and looking at setting up cohorts for the thirds and a couple of things in real time. I think they'll be available as we go into later part of August for teachers. We're definitely trying to make the transition into School G and set up classrooms. So at that point, you, you would have knowledge of your classroom in School G as well as being able to update it and see, see the rosters in there as well. There are some technical things we're going through, and it really, it really matters as far as, you know, hybrid versus- as far as, you know, hybrid versus virtual. So, we're working through that right now.
Between the high school classes, I think we talked about a collaborative effort. Michael talked about that. And how will teaching in-person and virtual students at the same time work for the teachers?
Yeah, so especially at the high school, an approach we're taking that we've heard from many of our PD providers, as well as a lot of roundtables we've been on, is planning a virtual environment with some students coming in for in-person learning, right? So, if you take that strategy, we are planning using Schoologee, using strategies that are ideal for three-day remote cycles, and with the understanding that students will be coming in, a third of the students daily for a certain strategy. We hope to provide that same strategy virtually for the students that choose 100% remote. And as been mentioned many times, the overall feedback we've heard is the ability for teachers to pull students and arrange with students the time that works for them is important in a flexible learning environment at that level. And again, we heard a little more structure at the middle school level, and that may be the difference in learning styles and age of learner. So, we made that adjustment appropriately in our plan.
Thank you. So, we have a comment on social media. People are saying they tried to call in and it's full. I'm sure that's true. The suggestion is we use a platform like Zoom that can take more people. Again, I am thrilled. I can't even tell you how happy I am. I can't believe we still have 200 people here with us at nine o'clock. I don't think that's ever happened in my four years. So, I'm thrilled to have you. I'm not on that social media, but if you want to, somebody, since you guys are doing such a great job answering questions and helping us out, if somebody wants to post that the video from the meeting will be posted on the district website shortly after we do adjourn the meeting, we will be happy to keep having questions based on the video. No problem, and we apologize. We did talk about the streaming option already for the virtual students, and thank you for answering about Google Meet. And yes, there are legal and privacy issues with the live streaming, so thank you. Mr. Weir, Thomas Weir, if you're with us, you can unmute to be able to share your address. The question is, how many teachers would our children be interacting with in this model excluding specials? And I do think it looks different at each level. So, maybe Kent and Janine each have to answer. Mr. Weir, I see that, or Weir, I see that you've unmuted. So, please, your name and address and...
Yes, hi. That's my son's name. My name is Laurel... No, no. My name is Laurel Weir, and I'm at 62 Overlake Terrace. I'm asking this question because I have twins, and I decided to split them next year. But if I'm dealing with different groups of teachers, I don't think I can split them. And so, I just am confused about how many teachers we'd be interacting with because that would be very difficult.
So, I'm going to say as a default, your building principal probably grouped them together for the health and safety of your family. If you chose the same delivery of instruction, because that... You do want to limit the number of people that you have contact with, with your family.
Yeah, definitely at home. But at home, though, like, are we going to be dealing with... Or they'd be grouped automatically together at home with virtual?
Oh, at home?
Oh, are you saying would they be on the same schedule? In other words, would they be attending the in-person on the same days? Is that the question?
Right, like, would we be dealing with different teachers for each of them? Or they'd automatically stay together and we'd just have the same set of teachers? Or is there one teacher? I guess we're confused about how many teachers we're interacting with.
The question is, if you have at home, are there more than one virtual teachers? Like, how many teachers will they... Do you have... Are you saying you have one at home and one in school?
No, no. I would have them do the same. I just decided to split them there, you know, and if they're... Right, they would do the same thing as each other. They'd either be in the hybrid or at home. But I'm just concerned if we end up all virtual, and I've agreed to split them, that I'm going to get a different set of teachers for each of them, and that would be very difficult to manage.
Yeah.
Sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead. I think so their homeroom teacher, if you're deciding to split them into different homerooms, would be different, and that would be their primary contact. Are they elementary students? I'm sorry if I missed that part.
Yes.
Okay, yeah. So, if you're choosing to split them, they would be with different homeroom teachers. And the homeroom teacher is really the point person for them for all of their work, virtual or hybrid. But what we could do is, so you would have that one point of contact, and then the specials teachers... I know you had excluding specials in your comments, so it would really be their homeroom teacher that they have the most contacts with. But we are making every effort to ensure that you have, if you have siblings, that they'll be in a similar cohort. So, that if you have two siblings in the same building, they would either be going in the hybrid schedule, in-person on Monday and Tuesday, or on Thursday and Friday, so that they line up.
And in all due respect, I probably think that's a personal issue that this parent can talk to you or the principal about offline personally.
Yeah. Also, please feel free to email us if you have questions like that, too. We're happy to answer specifics also, even after the meeting.
Mrs. Bonifay, I think we talked about looping already and keeping everybody together. Love the idea, and, you know, again, has so, so many benefits. And unfortunately, the challenges. We also spoke about the testing. And yes, so we're well aware that students, you know, we're asking students to wear washable masks to school. There's been a lot of conversation in the task force that parents ask their students to have a baggie maybe with a spare mask. But the truth is, especially our little ones, and we already know this, it's nothing you don't know if you have kids. They're going to sneeze in the mask. They're going to get a bloody nose, whatever it is. And if that mask is ruined or they don't have a backup, of course, there'll be a disposable mask available to them at school. No one will be able to come into school without a mask, right? You won't be able to socially distance line up for your temperature check without a mask either. So, I think people will get in the habit of maybe keeping that mask attached to them. Would tutoring be available for parents to help their children if we go 100% virtual? That is a very interesting question. Ms. Silva, if you're still on the call and can unmute, I'd be curious if you're asking for tutoring for like Schoologee or math lessons? I'm not sure. And I see you, so if you could say your name and your address, we can figure out what...
Hi, everyone. First of all, thank you for sharing this Google Meet with the parents. I believe it's very helpful and to give you some clarity and to make the best decision for our children. So, thank you all for that. My address is 55 Highfield Lane, Netherland, New Jersey. Well, my question regards to touring, right? I had a child in kindergarten, and I was going to first grade. Even though her teacher was very helpful, you know, to learn the phonics. Well, I work in a bank, so I'm not a teacher. How I go about to help my child for their improvements? How to read? How to do all those phonics? To me, I'm good at math. I'm not good at reading or anything. So, I even added my... My daughter is going to high school, so I asked her to help me. I went to Google, get videos, because I want my child to learn. And I think that's a lot of concern for a lot of parents, right? My concern is, I don't feel comfortable to take, to bring my child to school, but yet I believe it's very important because that one-to-one with a teacher. So, my question is in regards to touring. If I cannot help her to avoid my guilty mom conscience, is any touring available in the system that I can get in the call? I have even a meeting with that person to help my child. That's pretty... How can I help my child? That's my question.
Thank you for asking. I think a lot of people probably have the same question and maybe are not as willing to ask. So, thank you so much. Janine?
Yes, sorry. I was just posting my email in the chat. Somebody asked, so it's in there now if you need it.
Thank you.
I totally relate to what you're saying. We understand that on the elementary level especially, we're really partnering with parents in a lot of these ways and that you're doing a lot of the learning alongside your child. A lot of the instructional strategies that we're using are different than the way we may have learned things also. What I would encourage you to do is to reach out as soon as, you know, the school year begins to your child's teacher. I know parents, I know teachers have made videos specifically for parents to help them to learn a little bit about the math and about the different content and the best ways to teach it. On the tutoring question, Dr. Glazer, I'm not sure exactly if we have dedicated tutors. So, I'll let you speak to that part of the question. But I will say that I would definitely reach out to your child's teacher. Even a lot of our instructional resource websites, like Think Central for Math, have parent instructional videos even right on there for you as well.
And I was going to say, I know that there are a number of resources to help our parents, usually community-based resources. And I would say if you would email me, I'd be happy to connect you to some of those resources to help you as a parent. But Janine's right. We also have a lot of the online resources and other learning resources that we offer to our students have a parent component to help them.
Thank you. I really appreciate it. May I ask another question if I can?
You can talk until the chimes go. As soon as Ian rings the chimes, you're done.
Thank you. I had read in social media, and again, I'm not sure if that's a correct statement, but I read that kids are not allowed to bring book bags or lunch bags. Is that correct?
So, thank you. I'm just going to go on record right now and thank anybody that asks a question that they saw online to the actual people that can answer the question. So, thank you, thank you, thank you. We, if you look in the plan, it does say we are trying not to have any book bags, think like backpacks, right? Like your old-fashioned backpacks, messenger bags, those kinds of things. You won't need a lunchbox because unfortunately, there will not be lunch in that way, right? You won't need a pencil case or any of those fun things. And again, this is back to all the ways, school will be different. But in the plan, it does say that if you need to have a bag, right? Like for your own water bottle or separate from your Chromebook device bag, the best kind of bag to have is a washable cotton string bag. Just, you know, one of the... I don't know if I can describe it well, but it's like two pieces of material and a string, and you can wash it. That's the best thing to have instead of a backpack.
Thank you. And if you do good work, we'll make it together.
Thank you. You make my notice, 15. I appreciate you, too. Thank you. We've talked about, and I love this conversation going on between the parents. Thank you, guys. I guess if you have 200 people on a call and it's going to take this long, I appreciate you guys talking to each other in the chat. We did talk about what 100% virtual looked like. There's a conversation continuing about live streaming. Thank all of you for that. I think it's really interesting. So, here's an important one. What about specials for 100% virtual kids? If they get an hour of live from their homeroom teacher, what happens if the special's at the same time? And again, what about the schedule for 100% virtual learning students in elementary? It seems like they crisscross a little bit. So, Alexander Prince, if you're still on the call to unmute, give us your address, and Janine can talk about that special schedule and the special scheduling.
Yeah, sorry. It's Andrea Prince. I was just...
Oh, hi. Nice to see you. Andrea is another one of our task force members in full. Thank you for being here.
Yeah, no problem. So, yeah, I was just wondering, because I was looking at that schedule for, you know, the two to three o'clock where the virtual kids would get that, you know, synchronous learning or live learning. And then I heard you mention that specials would be taught live possibly in the afternoon. I wasn't sure if that would overlap, if they wouldn't get live specials if they were having their live with their homeroom teachers at that time.
Yeah, that's a good question. Thanks. So, on the days, in the hybrid schedule, on the days that students are virtual, they may be getting specials either in the morning because they're virtual all day long, or it would be at a time that doesn't conflict with that afternoon live session. So, that's a lot of the logistics that we've been working out in the elementary scheduling. But yeah, we'll ensure that they won't be happening at the same time.
Thank you so much.
No problem.
And then we had Ms. Bergen, Gabrielle Bergen. So, she asked about the schedule for 100% learning for elementary. So, if you're still on, please unmute. I know it's been a while since you asked that question, and I know we've talked about it, but I want to make sure that you have the chance to speak.
Why don't you cover the discussion? And if she comes back, then we'll include her later.
Yep. So, Kent and Janine, there's a theme happening that somehow it seems that the virtual students aren't getting the same benefit of future instruction as the in-person students. And I know in all of our conversations, the virtual students are really getting some robust instructions. So, can you address the equity of virtual versus the in-person and hybrid, please?
I can start. I can start with, I'll start at the secondary level. You know, at our middle school and high school, again, the plan would be to provide three-day instructional, I don't want to say units, but segments that are virtual in nature. The strategies we will use will, might provide direct instruction online, might provide extensions online, and then bring students... When we do have a chance to bring students together, there'll be opportunities for feedback and different strategies there. So, we're rethinking our segments of instruction to make them virtual segments with an in-person meeting for hybrid kids. And that meeting will take place for 100% remote kids in the afternoon. It'll be much more structured at the middle school. That's a theme that we've learned is appropriate for the different ages of the learners. At the elementary level, Janine, I don't know if you want me to go into it, but the strategy shifts a little bit to virtual homerooms, I believe.
Yes, yeah. So, on the elementary level, it's very, very likely that there will be dedicated 100% virtual homeroom teachers. So, that teacher will be available. That teacher is not going to be part of the hybrid model where they're seeing students in person at all. So, they'll be available throughout the day just for that 100% virtual cohort of students. So, you can expect to see that live instruction happening and that small group instruction happening throughout the day based on the specific needs of kids. With a whole class meet in the morning, with a whole class meet in the afternoon, and then some small group instruction throughout.
I hope that answered the question.
All right. Moving on, and I just realized that some of these questions, the reason that they're repeated and they got answered is because they're from almost two hours ago. So, again, thank you for hanging in with us while we work our way through. And again, amazing that so many of you have stayed with us. Lindsay Kratz, hi. Nice to see you on the call. Will somebody please explain the rationale behind only offering autism kindergarten children two single session days? Hi. Have in-person instruction. Parents of special needs children could be provided the option of sending their child for increased in-person instruction. And I know that April and Helen are on the call, and maybe they can unmute, and I'll give them an opportunity to say hi also. But I do want to say that, you know, again, we are very constrained by space, and especially with our youngest learners and our autistic, our ABA class of kindergarten learners as well. We really have to navigate that health and safety piece. I see Helen's little face pop up.
I did have some trouble, Dr. Glazer, getting on, and we did phone on. I guess I was muted. We were trying to speak, but you couldn't hear us. So, we're on now.
Good to see you now.
But we heard a lot of your responses. And we did, as an administrative team, we considered bringing in our ABA classes in. But due to the spacing issues, the safety issues, the social distancing issues, Mr. Perigi spoke briefly about the air conditioning unit at Spring Garden and at Radcliffe. We decided for phase one, we should be bringing in the students on those two days a week and then increasing as our phases will be increased as well. Those were our factors. And I know that several parents have... Those were our factors, and I know that several parents have aired their concerns, and we're working, and the building principals have been working with the majority of these parents that I see on the call as well. Our CST are here to take in people's emails. We're working very closely with our involved programs in district. Mrs. LaGuardia is at Spring Garden with our preschool. Mr. Carney is working with our parents and administrative team at Radcliffe, and Ms. Rustell at Lincoln, and throughout all of our programs. But each building holds a different population of students, and we're working diligently, trying to address all of our needs. So, thank you, Dr. Glazer, and thank you to the Board of Education as well.
And thank you.
Oh, sorry. I just want to add, with the phasing, our hopeful outcome is that some of our fears, right, about spacing and health and safety and all of those things don't come to fruition, and that is a group that we can add more days, more time, more hours.
And our class sizes, thank you, Lindsay, our class sizes are very large in district as well, as you know. So, to cut the classes in half, we would need extra space and extra staff as well. So, we're working with everyone. So, thank you so much.
And I think, I think there was a question or a statement, really, that maybe Mrs. Doyle and her team can have a special virtual meeting with the special needs parents that might have more specific questions. Not that it's not a concern of all of us here tonight.
Absolutely. That's a great idea.
And get the correct answers to them. That's all.
Yeah, and I would recommend that we do each building separately, because each building holds a separate population. For example, we would have a Radcliffe meeting, and that's not a problem. Parents can email us, and I know the building principals also have been accommodating all of our parents as well.
Thank you, and I'm sure, I'm sure we'll be responsible to work on that. Thank you.
Thank you. And thanks for hanging in there with us. Again, I have questions. We've answered about virtual learners, lots of questions about the schedules. There is a question, Mr. Bagna, schedules for the upper grades. We've talked a lot about the elementary and when information will be out, any information on schedules for the upper grades?
We typically hold schedules until the latter part of August, just because they may change, and then new students are being put in, new teachers are being put in. So, you know, we are really working to open up Schoology as early as we possibly could so we can start looking at classroom design and things of that nature virtually. So, I would answer it as soon as we can, knowing the constraints we have in virtual versus hybrid, and we're really working hard to sync our systems and get that set up for teachers as well as students.
Thank you. Again, more virtual, we talked about backpacks. We are going to do a special education information. Thank you, Mrs. Doyle Moreno. Will school supply lists be sent out? So, again, this is one of those times where you kind of have to willfully suspend your vision of what school looks like and that fun day of going to Staples or Walmart and buying all that stuff, because it's only gonna be stuff that you use at home. So, Janine talked a little bit about the at-home kits. I know Dr. Riley, for art and music and some other things will happen at home, but I don't think you should expect a school supply list the way it's looked in the past. That doesn't mean that there won't be things that we ask or that we talk about, but it's not gonna be, you know, the different color binder for every subject and this many blue pens and black pens. It won't look like that anymore for a while. Let's see, we talked about virtual, we talked about specials, more virtual, more specials. I did talk about the childcare, that we are committed to trying to do the afternoon childcare for the students, the days that they're in school and perhaps the other half of the kindergarten days. I'm pretty sure, by pretty sure, I'm 99% that we can take care of that until 4 o'clock, and I am fairly certain that there will be no before care. Special ed, we talked about. Preschool, our pre-K program is in the plan. I don't know, April I know is on the call. I don't know if Mrs. LaGuardia is still on the call. Helen, I know you're right there and unmuted. Do you want to talk about the preschool schedule quickly?
So, the preschool schedule, we have a variety of programs. We have the integrated program, general ed, as outlined, the ABA also coming in twice for two half-days, and our PSD as well. What specific questions, Dr. Glazer, did you want me to answer?
Just the days of the, you know, how many days, AM, PM, just like that.
Well, each building's schedule, I believe the building principals will be doing the schedules once we have the information from the parents, the As and the B days as well, just similar to Radcliffe, Lincoln. We're waiting for parents to put their answers into the portal, and then we're getting to work. We'll be working diligently, making sure, and we're trying to work with all of our parents. I'm hearing on the call, we have twins, we have parents with students in other buildings, and from what I heard from Mrs. Locan Solo, that we're trying to work with our parents.
Thank you, Helen. As far as student pickup, you know, these are all, I hate to say hypothetical, right? Until we actually do it, right? Until there's that 12:30 dismissal out of all of the different exit doors with the social distance and making sure that everybody is to their appropriate parent or car. I'm sorry that I can't give you more details on those expectations. I think that we're gonna practice it amongst ourselves and then be able to, building by building, give you those details based on your stop, drop, and go, and based on which grade levels or which entries and exits. Kathy Weber, this is a question that hasn't come up. I don't know if you're still on the call. If you are, please unmute and give your address. I don't know if you're here. I'll give you a second before I ask the question.
I am actually, my wife has stepped aside, but it's Stephen Sandberg, 387 Walnut Street in Nutley.
Hi, Stephen, nice to have you. And the question is, what happens if the board votes no to this proposal? Will there be enough time to revise the plan before school starts and give parents time to plan accordingly?
Yeah, I mean, obviously, I sat through the beginning of the meeting, and things appear to be delayed in terms of action by the board. Ultimately, everything we've talked about today doesn't go, doesn't become effective until and if the board votes on it. This is still preliminary. Decisions have to be made, both at the school level, certainly for parents, and I'm concerned if the final vote isn't till the 31st, assuming everything goes well, that only leaves a week to implement everything. As a parent, I don't know if that's enough time in order to prepare what we need to do in terms of childcare and everything else, and to make sure our son gets the education that certainly he deserves, and I know you're working hard to prepare for.
Mr. Sandberg, thank you very much. Thank you also, another member who volunteered to work with us as we develop the plan. I can't answer the question for the board. I'm gonna turn that over to Mr. Kazinsky, but you're correct, August 31st would not be enough time. We have to continue to build our plan and build our protocols so that every child can come to school safely and remain healthy. Mr. Kazinsky?
Mr. Sandberg, appreciate your input. The discussion we had at the beginning of the meeting was something we were not prepared for tonight, but Monday night, we'll have our discussion of the board, if not before that, and then if we need to, we can always call for a special meeting before the 31st to discuss the movement of whatever plans we eventually agree upon. Our delay of our meeting till Monday night was to have our attorney present to make sure that legally, we're doing what's required. Academically, we think we're doing what's required, but legally, we need to be on point, and we'll resolve that, I would think, on Monday night. If it takes a special meeting before the 31st, all we need to do is put 48-hour notice, and we can do that.
And this, just as a reminder, this is a special meeting that we announced on August 4th for tonight, so we do have that capability. All right. Thank you, Mr. Sandberg. I'm gonna keep going.
Dr. Glazer?
Oh, yes?
Yeah, this is Sal Ferraro.
Sal's one of our board members, audience.
I thought the motion we made was that we were gonna call for a special meeting for Monday.
Yes, we are, Mr. Ferraro. I think he was looking beyond Monday, okay? But yes, we are calling for a special meeting on Monday, which we can do, but I think Mr. Sandberg was more concerned about going beyond Monday and getting it resolved before the 31st. So, after Monday, if we need to call for another special meeting after that, I'm saying we can do that.
And I realize that you called for a special meeting on Monday. I just want you to be aware that not everybody that needs to be part of the conversation might be available. So, you need to maybe look at those dates. But yes, I think Charlie summarized Mr. Sandberg's concerns. Thank you.
Can I just say something real quick? I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Another board member. Thank you.
I just, to his concerns, and I'm sure everybody has the same concern on the call, I'm a parent, I have the concern, everyone has the same concerns. I don't, as a board, we're not gonna not figure it out. We're not gonna let it go to August 31st and not let there be a plan and not have a plan for the children. So, just be insured that that's not going to happen. We wouldn't, the nine of us, Kent, Janine, Dr. Glazer, Helen, anybody on this call, David, Michael, I don't think there's anybody that would sit here and say, we're gonna not agree upon and wait till the 31st to come up with the plan. That's, I don't, I just hope nobody walks away with that feeling like that, because that would, no, but no one on this call wants anyone to walk away feeling like that, I can promise everybody that. And I think we could all be in agreement about that.
Thank you, Mrs. Ferraro. Dr. Glazer, we need to continue.
Yep. So, Kent, Janine, I know that this is already in the works, but further clarification regarding the Schoology training for parents. I mentioned it briefly, but maybe you could go into some more detail, please.
Yeah, so, we're providing, or we're preparing to provide PD for teachers as well as information for parents on Schoology during the last two weeks of August. Most of those sessions will be for teachers, optional tech support and different items. We actually have a fair amount of our teachers presenting and leading those sessions, which we're very proud of. But also for parents, we have seen a developed orientation to Schoology. We've seen the components of it. We are working with Dr. Shosha to find dates. The session will be recorded, and we're trying to plan it for the most strategic time as we enter the school year.
Thank you. Stay unmuted. Kate Barnes, if you're still on the call, please unmute so you can share your own name and address. But Kent, for the high school, will virtual students have a link to watch the in-person classroom instruction live, or will it mirror what was done in the spring online with just YouTube clips?
Right, so, we are encouraging teachers, and actually, we're making it part of our new teacher orientation, to teach them and work with them to record instructional sessions. I think when we talk with teachers, we want to find the best way to post direct instruction online. That may be recording a lesson in class, it might be the most convenient way, it may not be, and we will work with teachers to find that way. But we hope to find the most accurate and the best way to record things and post them online for those students.
Thank you. I see my email is here. Thank you, Ian, again. I already am getting emails, so, thank you, and thank you for being willing to ask questions, all of you community members. I think we did answer when we'll know our children's teachers. First, we have to know which models that we're putting people in. I do think it'll be earlier this year, it usually is the first Friday, you know, that Friday before the first day of school. I think just for cohorting and childcare and some other issues, I think that we'll know that sooner. Ms. Kratz, again, I think we've answered this, and now we'll have the individual special education meetings if there's additional information that's needing. Ms. Mullinari, we are, as Janine said, working to make sure that siblings will be attending on the same days of class so that, you know, you can make your plans that way, even if that's a manual change that we have to make. We're fine doing that. We've talked about the virtual and the hybrid. Yes, health and safety first. We've talked about virtual a little bit, special ed, and how that's being incorporated in the plan. And Ms. Mullinari, I know that we've talked about it a little bit since you put your question in, but please go to the plan because it is detailed at each level, what's happening in special education for English language learners as well. We've talked about the live streaming, additional grade-specific question-and-answer sessions for parents. We can do that. We've held six of these sessions so far, and I think that we would be happy to hold more sessions coming up. Look at Kent and Janine, don't they look happy? It's only a couple hours. No, I'm kidding, Ms. Ferraro. We would be happy to do that, and if it helps people, we want to make sure that we're able to do that. Is there a chat to call on questions? I don't know what that means, Mr. Giannetti, but if you're still on the call, you can unmute, tell us your address, and ask us what you mean.
All right, Dr. Glazer, in all due respect, I think we need to try to get through as much as we can.
I just want to honor everybody. To have 200 people staying on the call, I do feel like we just need to honor their time.
And so do I, but I want to try to get through them all, that's all.
So, the question is, have our teachers been polled or asked their opinions about returning in September? So, just to be clear, I also work with Elizabeth Superintendent. The size of their district is not the same as Nutley. Our expectation is that all teachers are returning to school in September, and the same way as if there's any health issue, whatever that health issue may be, or family leave, or maternity leave, or whatever those things are, those staff members do reach out to their administrator, they typically copy me, they typically copy Karen Greco, our employee relations director. We do individual determinations for everybody and have an individual meeting. Again, we're able to do that with the size of our staff. It does look somewhat different. Can we address the cleaning of desks and chairs between classes at the middle school? I think we did that. We spoke to the all-virtual option. How do accelerated classes fit into the middle school schedule? Ms. Rutnick, if you're still on the call and can unmute?
Rutnick.
Hi, Ms. Rutnick. So, your question is, how do the accelerated classes fit into the middle school schedule?
Yes.
I think you're probably talking about math. That's one of our classes that gets tracked early on, seventh and eighth grade. Our teachers are being prepared with the strategies in that class. That class will run, as typical, our seventh-grade accelerated algebra and geometry correspondingly have been screened for and will run in the capacity we're talking about.
Okay. But with the students going alphabetically, so how, I'm just not clear on how that's, are the, so they're gonna get their schedule, and then they'll just be the ones in that class, everybody within those letters then? I'm so...
Yeah, so if the class has 20 students in it, the students that are A through F would come in on the first day, and then the students G through O on the second day, and the remainder of students on the third day, and the teacher will work in three-day instructional segments to move the class forward in the curriculum.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, thank you.
Are you sure? You still look a little baffled. Did we answer the question, or we want to go more in detail?
I think the question is, how can the rigors of an honors, and I saw that question in there, the honors or accelerated track be accommodated in this, all the planning we're talking about? And like everything else, we are adjusting and modifying, and the pace will look different, I'm sure. The level of detail will look different, probably also your continuum of abstract versus concrete learners. So, independent-wise, they're probably more suited to the independent work that we ask in a remote environment. So, we'll take all these things into consideration and work with the teachers to plan the best track possible for our accelerated, as well as our honors at the high school, and our AP classes. which provides a good challenge, but we will work to overcome that challenge.
And as we mentioned, this is going to be an ongoing project. So there will certainly be some adjustments when it comes to our special needs children. And certainly for the accelerated students at the other end, we're going to have to make adjustments all the way through this program.
Thank you. Thank you. So I'm not sure if it's Costanza di Piazza or our Tracy Marinelli, who are the next series of questions. So whichever, Tracy, I don't know if it's you. Come on.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
I'm sorry for the confusion. I couldn't get in the meeting, so I had to run over, literally run over to a friend's house. So it's Tracy.
Please state your name and address, even though it's in the chat, and then I'll work your way through the questions.
As we can see, that's what teachers do.
It's Tracy Marinelli, Five White Terrace. And I just, I don't want to take up all of my two minutes with this, but I just want to thank you all because, you know, we are dealing with a problem here that has no solution. And all of your time is so greatly appreciated, so I don't want any of my questions to come off as judgmental. And there is a comment a little bit down below that came off a little bit more fresh than it was intended to. It was in regard to, so if you can address it all at the same time. It was in regards to if a student's status changes, that the possibility would be that they would be then going to school with students in another building. And having been an active participant of all of your meetings, I know how important SEL has been. So I am just very cautious about the detriment that that would be, especially to young students who haven't seen their classmates. And some of the only reason we would be sending them back is to have those connections again with their friends. So that was just a little concerning because that was the first time I had heard that.
Yeah, and I will address that. You're right. It is, I don't want to say a new conversation, but it was a meeting that came up right before the board meeting, so I will talk about that. And I'm going to work my way through, so anytime, unmute if I'm not catching this. And thank you for your support. Tracy's another one. She's been in all of our task force meetings and truly helpful. So Wednesday is not the only deep cleaning time. We are actually deep cleaning all of the time. I don't want anybody to misunderstand that. And I do want to make sure that everybody knows that that cleaning is ongoing, those touch points, the desks, everything that's happening all the time. I know Michael Perigi has already talked about the protocols and the standard operating procedures. But if there's anything else, Michael, that you want to add so people understand that that cleaning is all the time. Wednesday virtual is more for practice in case we have to pivot to 100% virtual. Yeah, I know that that makes little sense to some people that they might not understand. But not all of our children are adept at online, and not all of our children are adept at using Schoology or working independently. And if we are going to have to be 100% virtual for an extended period of time, we want to make sure that everybody has the capacity to do that. So, Michael, was there anything I didn't talk about, deep cleaning?
No, Doc. No, Doc, you covered everything.
All right. Fully virtual. There is direct instruction, I think.
Don't waste your time on that. You answered that.
And the cohort sections after Friday. And I know that there's all different research on this temperature taking. I want you to know, my head is spinning. Anybody that's been in a meeting with me over the last three weeks knows we have gone between the Department of Health guidance, the local guidance, the CDC guidance on this temperature taking. And we finally, on Friday, in our roundtable meeting, using the medical professionals, our nurses, the Department of Health, the decision was made that we are going to do the temperature taking, the feeling amongst the medical professionals, of which I am not one, unfortunately. It says that the benefit of that daily temperature is more benefit than risk. And some of it, interestingly enough, and I don't want to give it away, but some of it is optics, that if you know you're going to have your temperature taken every day and you have just done your screening with your symptoms, that you might be more inclined to be honest if you are not feeling well or stay home when you know you're going to have that temperature taken. So there was that. I don't know. Was there anything else?
The other, just the other piece about they could possibly go to school with students.
Oh, sorry. It wasn't with these top questions. Sorry.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So here's the thing. We have a number, a large number of working parents in the district. And while they understand that this is a phased-in plan, right, that we're going to start today and we're going to hope for adding hours or adding days as we go forward and as we can, the question was, when we get the data back this week, if there were schools that had open spaces in classrooms, right? If there were seats, you know, if I go to Washington School, right, and I don't, there are no more seats for in-person, but I want my child in in-person, and there's a seat at Spring Garden or a seat at Lincoln, could my child take that seat so that I'm able to continue to work?
If they wanted to switch from virtual to in-person, that would be an option?
Yes.
Oh, that makes much more sense.
Okay, I hope that's helpful. And it's challenging, right, because we still really don't know, I hate to say that. We really don't know what it's going to look like. We can make all of these plans, and those first couple weeks of school are going to be critical, just critical.
Thank you so much.
No, thank you always. We're going to do these grade-specific. I think I must have scrolled the wrong way for a minute. Hang on just a second. Oh, I did. There's Tracy. I talked about 100% virtual considerations for sibling schedules. We talked about the aggregate results of the survey, how that's impacted, no change to the current plan. Yes, that's a great question, Mrs. Ferrer, and we know that you were on the last board meeting. Thank you and have joined our task forces. We've had a pretty consistent response so far to the virtual versus the in-person and hybrid. Unfortunately, the sample sizes are very small, class by class and grade by grade. So I can share with you that at this point, and let me say, they're two different surveys, right? Last week, there was the survey where we asked people what they believed based on the plan that they would choose, whether they would choose in-person hybrid or they would choose 100% virtual. And after we had 80% of respondents, we had about a third stay virtual. We now, this week, have the deadline for people to make their commitment, right? And the reason that we talked about reminding people to go into real time and to make that commitment by Friday is where we had a huge response last week. Only about 35% of people, parents, have gone into the portal to make a choice at this point. So again, we'll remind people tonight to please go in and make that choice. We will send an email tomorrow and remind people to please go into the portal and make their choice. And I hope that that is helpful. We've talked about the sanitizing. We did talk about childcare. I answered, I kind of want to call you Costanza di Piazza forever. It's a beautiful name. But we answered Mrs. Marinelli's second question. What does dismissal look like? We did talk about that a little bit, talking about students being a staggered dismissal with their teacher out of different doors, using all of the doors and having assigned doors. Again, with the railings, teachers touching them walking down the stairs. Mr. Perigi has talked about our cleaning protocols for the touch points and in-between classes, class size for virtual. Again, we would like to keep our standard class size guidelines for virtual. I don't know what the response will be at this point. I don't know, Kent or Janine, do you have any other clarification for that?
We really need the data to project those things.
Yeah.
And again, I know that we've gone back through the virtual instruction now a couple of times. We've talked about the lessons prerecorded a couple times and the supervision of teachers to make sure that instruction is equal, is equitable, whether you're in-person or virtual. And I want to say again, we've learned a lot since our emergency plan in March, and this is a well-thought-out plan. This is including all of our principals, including all of our coordinators. We have a large number of staff that have been involved in the task forces. I think you know that I've publicly thanked our associations, whether it's our Teachers Association, our Administrators Association, our Bus Drivers Collective Bargaining Unit, and our Custodial Unit because everybody has contributed to make sure that we are putting in a plan that we can hold everybody accountable to. And I think that as we continue with our professional learning and we continue with sharing those expectations for staff, for students, for families, I think that that equity will become even more clear. We are not looking at packets or bulk assignments. We aren't looking at any of those kinds of things as far as our instruction goes. So hopefully, that will alleviate some of that concern. And we did also talk about cleaning the desk between classes being a collaborative effort. And so that's a great question. Thank you. Same person, if we're relying on the children to clean and wipe, what happens if they forget their cleaning supplies? The students will not be required to provide their cleaning supplies. Mr. Perigi is doing all of that. I know, again, this is back to our old-school supply lists where you might have had to bring wipes or paper towels for every classroom. That will not be the case at this time. Going forward, if students do not adhere to wearing masks, social distancing, is it in the policy that students who don't adhere to the code of conduct during the pandemic will be removed from in-person instruction to remote? Is this in the policy? So I want to answer this in two parts. The mask-wearing, the social distancing is written into the policy. It is said that just like our, our, why can't I get the words out? It's been too long of a night. Dress code policy, got it? Pulled it right out there at the last minute. Thank you for jumping in to help me. I saw all of your lips moving. That they would in fact be removed the first time. There is only a one time, right? If there is any other time, you are correct, they are removed and immediately put to that remote instruction. This is critical to our health and safety of all the students and staff. And the masks and social distancing, the hand washing, all of that is not up for discussion. Busing for special education students. Yes, transportation is written into the plan. I know that it's brief in the plan. It tells you what we're going to do as far as what it looks like on the buses. But again, this is going to be an individual conversation with families who take part in the transportation. We want to make sure that everybody has a clear understanding of what we're talking about and a clear expectation for the students. Think of, again, it's one of those close-your-eyes things, sorry. But think of a 54-person bus. We could only put 11 students on that bus. So if we're used to doing one route with 54 students, now we're going to have to do four, maybe five routes to get all of those students where they need to go. Students may be on the buses for an extended period of time. And as you know, students will be required to wear their face masks. The windows will be open on the buses. There will be a temperature check before they get on the bus. They will hand sanitize before they get on the bus. We cannot have hand sanitizer on the actual buses. It is flammable. We will be working with entry and exit on the bus, right? You come in one door, you may go out the other door, again, for social distancing. But those conversations for special education parents really need to be thought through for your individual child and your individual child's needs because it is going to look significantly different, both in district and out of district.
Dr. Glazer, can I also add that the meetings that we'll hold will be general meetings. We are not going to be talking about individuals' IEPs in a group forum due to confidentiality. So my parent advisory groups, I can invite parents. I can keep that public. But if you have an individual IEP concern, we request that you email the case manager or myself, and we will work with you. Thank you.
Thanks, Mrs. Moreno. Good point.
Thank you. And again, this, the switch from hybrid to virtual and the policy that Erica detailed earlier, that timing is for every grade level, right? It is not different for elementary than for middle school or high school. That timing of whether it's a couple days or a couple weeks, depending on your mode of instruction, is true whether, whatever grade level or grade span you're at. We have already discussed ventilation, schools. Ms. Silva, if there was something else you wanted to add, I'll come back to you. I'm not sure what the schools relates to.
Yes, I had several questions in regards to that, the locker room, like lockers, the students can use the lockers.
No, there will be no locker, no locker room. None of that. Students will have to hand carry or use their washable cloth string bag to bring their materials to school. Their device comes with a case, and that's it. There will not be any changing for PE. There won't be any sharing of lockers, using of locker, none of that.
And in the morning, when the students go into the school, it'll be like a mark six feet to get online and to go inside of the school. How the protocol is going to be made? It's going to be like a kindergarten class lineup? How is the lineup?
So again, just in general, I'll just cover it generally. There'll be different entrances being used. We're not going to just use the one secure entrance. Every different entrance will be used. Different stairwells will be used for different grade levels. There'll be directionals for the one-way hallways, so it will be staggered, so everybody...
Excuse me. Mrs. Silva, you need to mute when you're not talking, please. Thank you.
So everybody won't be entering en masse all at the same time like they do now. And there will be a time period, right, between a certain amount of time before we enter where we'll ask your students to come. I hope that that ends here. Did you have another question, Ms. Silva?
Just one last. I know some schools where they're doing, they're doing the mandatory for the kids before they go to the classrooms to go wash their hands. Is something as a thought that might be, I know for the kids to go wash their hands at the same time, I know it's an issue, right?
So for us, I think it's going to look like hand sanitizer as they enter.
That's all. Thank you.
Sure. Let's see, we already talked about the 100% virtual. Is it possible to record the 60-minute math, 90-minute live instruction for afterward viewing? I think we've talked about all of these. And I'm going to say, Kent and Janine went into a lot of detail. We've committed to doing a follow-up elementary, middle school, and high school meeting. So I would encourage, if there's something that you feel like we didn't cover with the 100% virtual versus the hybrid instruction, that we please bring those new questions. Michael Stoffers, our EAN Vice President, hello. Thank you for staying with us. Thank you for everything you've done for us so far. It looks like you say you have some comments, so we'll turn it over.
Well, first of all, the irony is not lost on us that we're conducting a virtual meeting to discuss whether or not people go to school in person. I think that if we couldn't pull this together in the high school auditorium or the middle school auditorium... or the middle school auditorium, with perhaps having people come in individually and perhaps broadcast it somewhere else, then we probably should have waited on bringing everybody back to school. We know this is not an easy time for anyone in dealing with the COVID-19 and its effects on our personal lives. The members of the Education Association of Nutley, when called upon, have always risen to accomplish whatever has been requested of them. This time is no different. In March, when the schools closed, the education did not stop. Learning continued. Learning will continue in September as well. Many hours and days of work went into the plan being presented for the opening of school in September. While the plan presented by Central Office may have had input from different groups, the task force that were developed had input after the plan had been devised. In meetings attended by the association, schedules, security measures, building configurations, health issues had already been developed. After such meetings, very little changed in the original basic plan. In those meetings, many things were discussed, including the lack of ventilation throughout the district. If there is ventilation now, what changes were made to the physical plan to improve it? While the educational needs of each level in the district are obviously different, there is very little parity between the various levels. Elementary schools will come today, come to school four days a week, with a day in the middle of the week, which will be a virtual day. All deep cleaning of the building will take place on that day. The middle school will come in five days a week. In-person morning sessions, virtual afternoon sessions. No virtual day during the week for a deep cleaning of the building. The high school will be similar to the middle school, with morning in-person learning five days a week, with no afternoon classes, instead having office hours. Also, no day of deep cleaning in the middle of the week. If a day in the middle of the week is necessary for cleaning in the elementary schools, why not at the secondary level? Surrounding districts, Belleville, Bloomfield, Clifton, Montclair, have all included a virtual day for proper cleaning of the school buildings to take place. The association feels the governor should have allowed districts to choose whether or not to have in-person instruction. More than 15 districts have already determined that they will have only virtual learning. As of now, none of those districts have had their plans rejected. Although the district has implemented a program designed to contain the spread of the virus, many factors cannot be quantified and therefore are left out of this plan. Considering all that we know right now and the massive amount of information that is unknown, it is the feeling of the association that the district join the other districts opting for a virtual-only opening for the 2020-2021 school year. Prior to the end of the first marking period, a reassessment can be done and a determination made as to how to continue. Health and safety should be the first priority. Inaction by the governor is no reason for the district not to act in the best interests of the students and the staff. Thank you very much.
And thank you very much. And again, I know we've talked about this this evening, but the virtual day is not a day just for deep cleaning. We're cleaning every day, deep cleaning every single day and cleaning between classes. So I don't want that to be misrepresented. And I do want to make sure that I say again that for the elementary students, having a virtual learning day to practice and to become confident and competent and regular users of the technology in the event that we are 100% virtual is really critical. I always appreciate what you bring to the table, and I always appreciate the EAN. I mean, if you read the plan, you know that I am grateful for everything. And I will put it on the record tonight. I am grateful that you went through every single page of the plan and made comments and gave us an opportunity to see inside of what was happening. It was hugely helpful, as I told you. And again, we're very appreciative of everything you've done. I hear you, and I hope that you'll also share your letter with the governor.
Well, we did compose a letter to the governor. We will be sending that out. But with regard to the plan, we were not included at the early stages of this. Had we been included, perhaps things may have been different. We only came into the plan when the task force were formed. Prior to that, you told me that you had 17 meetings. None of which the association was part of.
There were 17 total meetings with the task force. We had four task force meeting multiple times. So anyway, I don't want to debate, Mike.
Yeah, I'm not here to debate either. I just wish that we had been included earlier.
You are included all the way. And again, much appreciated. I truly cannot tell you enough how much, how much we appreciate your input and your comments tonight. I'm going to keep going, though, unless you have a.
I'm fine. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so if a student is required to quarantine, please mute if you, thank you. If a student is required to quarantine or if a classroom is required to close during, due to an exposure to COVID, will those students revert to all virtual? Yes, during the time that they're in quarantine, they will still receive virtual instruction. However, if somebody's not feeling well, I can't, I cannot say this enough. If you're not feeling well, that's okay. You're not feeling well. The expectation is to feel better, to get better, whether you're a staff member or a student. And again, that policy for anybody that needs to be out of school, that is correct. Education will be continued virtually if you need to be out of school. Again, not everybody that gets sick is going to have COVID, thank God. Let's hope that we can keep the usual illnesses, runny nose, you know, whatever it is, and not have any of those positive cases. And again, if your child is feeling under the weather and they stay home, can they do virtual lessons for those days? They'll have, bless you, Janine, they'll have, they'll have that opportunity to have that meeting time with their teacher. They won't have to wait a certain number of days to, to, to. This isn't reverting to virtual when they're not feeling well. There is a difference, right? It's a choice of instructional model. If you're not feeling well, you're not changing your instructional model. It's the same as when you're out sick. So if they have a bug or a headache or a toothache, please stay home. And yes, we'll make sure that the instruction is there. Yes, the air conditioning is allowed to be on. It just needs to be supplemented with fresh air, open windows, all that kind of thing. So figure, I don't know if you can see in my house, I have a fan blowing on me during this whole time. You're going to have to have fresh air in addition. It can't just be an air conditioning unit or air conditioning. We are going to have that special meeting with special services. And yes, I will be there. We'll get the administrators there. We will make sure we have the questions answered. Thank you for supporting each other. I have to say, one of my favorite parts of all of these processes is that you remember that you're neighbors and that you are here for each other, regardless of everything else. So thanks for supporting each other. We can absolutely have another question and answer just about virtual. I think we could do that maybe by the grade level spans. I think that makes better sense. I already shared the parent responses. Will there be two different teachers for virtual-only students? Students in the hybrid model? Two different teachers? I'm not understanding. I'm sorry. Mr. or Mrs. Gupta, if you're still on the call, please unmute so I can understand your question. Will there be two different teachers for virtual-only students versus students in the hybrid model? Are you still with us? I'm sorry, I'm not understanding. Kent, Janine, can you, are you there?
Why don't we continue and then after we come back?
Any light you could shed on that? I'm sorry, I'm not quite clear.
I don't know if I'm clear.
Please, please come back if you're with us. The amount of live instruction is not up to the teacher. Again, those expectations will be clarified. I do think we talked about the advanced classes and what that looks like. I'm sorry, your phone was about to die, but hopefully you'll tune in and watch the rest of the video, whatever you missed. If you still have questions, again, my email, Dr. Julie Glazer. My email is in the chat. It is jglazer@nutleyschools, plural, schools.org. Maybe Ian can put it in again. And yes, we'll have that virtual meeting. Attendance? Attendance, are teachers in the building during virtual office hours? Should we be buying Chromebooks for kindergartners? There are lots of questions. So Ms. Melchionne or Mr. Whoever was, who is ever on the call now? I think we're going to break this up a little bit. So let's talk about, let's break up kindergartners and Chromebooks. I wouldn't buy anything right now, myself. Attendance, do you want to talk about attendance, Kent or Janine?
Yeah, Doc, I lost you in the questions here, but are teachers in the building? I found it. How's it being taken for virtual students? I think there's a couple of different options on the table, depending if we're 100% virtual or if just a couple, you know, some students are. Right now, we went from Google Forum to the way we did it last spring. We're still going through a couple of models there. Are teachers in the building during virtual office hours? Are they teaching from home? It depends. I think there'll be an option for teachers, and it'd be in the best place they need to be to deliver instruction during office hours. So there are some benefits and some reasons why teachers may want to go to their environment. There may be some reasons for them to stay in the school environment. And I think there'll be options for teachers in that regard. Chromebooks for kindergartners, as Dr. G.
I already answered. Yeah, you can go.
Yeah, right now, in the draft plan, there is not.
Kent, you need to actually read the question, because not everybody can see it. And on the video, they won't see it later.
Is there a specific schedule for afternoon classes for the high school? What class groups are meeting virtually and at what time? Right, so because of the overlap and different scheduling parameters, we chose to leave this up to the teacher to schedule a time. And we saw that happen in the spring. And we also saw the flexibility of that being beneficial to our high school teachers. So we thought we would go with that in the current draft. Will there be a schedule available for consistency so there is no overlap issues, as that was an issue in the spring? So we didn't hear that. We heard that a lot at the middle school. But we wanted to make that, those optional at time for teachers to pull certain students at their discretion during that time. What do you have to PD look like for teachers in a hybrid model? We haven't gotten there yet. I would think we still provide PD in some capacity, because there's many things that we'd like to provide PD on. What are teachers going to learn of their specific duties and expectations for teaching virtual and hybrid at the same time? So those expectations will be put together and put out, definitely for the three days we have, the first week of September. We'll go through that at the very latest.
Thank you. And Ms. Gonzalez, when we're talking about kids being removed for not wearing masks, we're talking about our typical children, right? We're aware that some children have behavioral issues, and we deal with those children individually. However, children are expected to wear masks, as Janine, Mrs. Locan Solo said. Maybe start building up some mask stamina, everybody. I know we still have 160 people on this call, amazing to me. Maybe still get some of your kids, you know, to start practicing if they're not wearing masks yet. Although I know that at this point, you know, the expectation.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Dr. Glazer, can I just go back to the last question?
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't, no, I skipped one.
Well, that's okay. If we were to go at 100% remote, the entire school, there would be a structure of the meeting times in the morning. So I just reread that question. I want to provide that clarity to Mrs. Melchione in that question.
Thank you. And Ms. Semel Munson, you took notes in their quotes. My goodness, thank you. I cannot wait to go back to your Google Doc. And thank you for taking notes. Much appreciated always. You can come to every task force meeting and take notes. I appreciate it. Let's see, I have Mr. Praport. Praport, if you're still on the call, please unmute and come on. Mrs. Locan Solo said it's likely that virtual-only students will have a dedicated teacher, not also teaching a hybrid class. Will we know that before we have to decide to do virtual or only hybrid? If there'll be a dedicated teacher? I don't know that I could make the decision without knowing if my daughter will have a virtual-only teacher who is not responsible for also teaching 20-plus hybrid students.
Yeah, I'm here.
Hi, thank you. And thank you for your emails, by the way. I keep answering, but they are bouncing back. So I'm not sure if what got forwarded to me is missing part of your email address. But please, I'm trying to answer you. I have all your answers from your email. So, yep, Janine, do you want to hit this one?
Thank you. Yeah, I did say that that was likely, that the all-virtual students will be assigned an individual teacher just for virtual-only. Quite honestly, that's really the leading option that we have at this point. I just don't want to say definitively until parents complete the survey and we know exactly how many students are virtually only. But I would feel confident in telling you that you can probably make your decision with the guidance that there will be a teacher assigned to the 100% virtual students that's just doing virtual-only. Is that safe to say at this point, Dr. Glazer?
Yes.
Okay.
So if I choose virtual-only, and then for some reason that's unforeseen, it's, I don't, my daughter doesn't get a dedicated teacher, can I then switch to the hybrid?
Yes, you just have to follow the procedure in the.
That would be the next trimester, though. I'd miss like three months. I want to go like the first day if my daughter doesn't have a full-time teacher.
So I'm going to say, we're going to know the answer to this in the next couple of days. And I'm sure that we can have a little bit of flexibility in the first couple of days. It's after school starts that we are concerned that we won't be able to accommodate people.
Okay, and just one more question while you guys are here. Just if I, if we do send, if we do send my daughter or for everybody who's listening, their kids to the school, especially in elementary, it's first grade, they're all very mass, they're six feet apart. What do you envision like any socialization? Is there at all, or what that would look like? I mean, I know it's hard to predict, but is there?
I did say at the beginning of the call that if you're sending your child, if you're making your decision based on socialization, you really need to rethink it. I would ask you, the same way I've asked everybody, to close their eyes and picture what school's going to look like in this plan. Not your vision of school, but school where no other furniture's in the classroom. Think of a first grade, no rugs, no beanbag chairs, no centers, no play areas. All the children sitting at an individual desk, facing forward, facing the teacher. And perhaps opportunities for some structured outdoor time. I hesitate to call that recess, maybe a walk or whatever. But it is, it is not socialization like you think of school. It can't be. And I'm sorry.
No, I just was just curious what you guys pictured. I was.
Yeah, unfortunately, it's not what we would hope.
Thanks very much.
Of course. And again, either email me a new email address, because I have it all, it just won't go through.
Yeah, from a different email address.
Thank you. Lockdown procedures. Mrs. Alameda, if you're still on the call, you can unmute with your address. I'm going to say that at state level, the various forms of drills have been suspended. For the Nutley Public Schools, as we communicated in our task force meetings, that's not acceptable to us. We have a number of students who'll be new to our buildings and students that'll have different entry and exit plans than they might have during an established drill. So for our Nutley Public Schools, we are going to continue to do our drill so every student knows what to do. Every student knows what to do in case of an emergency. Is this Mrs. Alameda?
Dr. Glazer, I would mention our meeting this morning with the Commissioner of Public Safety and the police chief to let them know that things are moving forward as far as drills are concerned and the fire department as normal. Just so when we do go back to a normal life, we'll be prepared for whatever might be faced by our children.
Well, and I want to make sure that in case of a real emergency, everybody knows what to do. We are opening the doors and windows, then, you know, nothing changes, right? If you have students in school, so they need to know how to respond. Will windows be open when it's raining and snowing? Windows will be open, always. The guidance is that you need that outdoor fresh air. That's the number-one ventilation guidance. I'm not sure how to figure that out yet. But now, if it's raining, like it's raining here and my windows are open, so we'll have to be able to figure out what we can do with that. When will we find out K to six groups our child will be divided into? Again, we've talked about that. It's usually the Friday before the start of school. We think with this. We think with this, um, the way we're asking people to commit, that we'll be able to, to let you know that sooner. Um, and, and again, as soon as possible. Students carrying book bags and pocketbooks to carry their personal items. Female students, students unable to use lockers, happens to their jackets and coats. Great question. Um, during this part of the school year, again, we're, we're talking about a September opening and we are hoping, um, that, that this curve stays flat and it looks different as we go into October, November, December. Um, coming back to school now, um, you won't have coats or jackets. And we're asking that instead of pocketbooks and book bags, that people carry, um, washable, the washable string bags. So you would be able to still carry your, um, female personal items or any of your, um, other personal items with you. It just wouldn't be in a backpack or a pocketbook. Um, have adjustments been made to the lockdown shelter in place or fire drill procedures? Again, um, I just answered that, but I want to make sure that people understand there are specific lockdown shelter in place and fire drill procedures, um, for every classroom and school during, during this pandemic time. It's been suspended by, um, the Department of Education. We as a Nutley Public Schools are continuing, um, our lockdown drills. And that's really important because the, um, the fire drill procedure might look different from your entry or exit procedure. And again, we do want every student to, to know what to do in case of a real emergency. Um, this website, Pure, Pure, Pure N S U A, Pure, Pure Sam USA, um, is where you can find the ingredients for our sanitizing, um, supplies. Um, virtual learning at nutleyschools.org is where you can write if you're having technical difficulty, if you need a Chromebook, um, any of those kinds of things, any kind of technical support. Please do remember it is summer. Um, we will promise, we will promise to respond to you. So you know, we got your email, but you might not get a, an answer to your question, um, until closer to the start of school. Emergency plans, fire drill, shelter in place, I've talked about that. Is there a separate COVID emergency plan policy? Great question. So every building has a crisis response team. Those crisis response teams have, um, kind of morphed into what's called the pandemic response team that's in the Department of Education roadmap. Um, the list of all of the members that are on those pandemic response teams by school and district are listed. Um, I can certainly go through those again. It's kind of long. Um, but we do, um, we do have those plans and we continue to discuss those as buildings. And then their principal is the district representative, um, from the buildings and the nurse is the contact tracing lead, um, for each building. What if the district doesn't have enough qualified teachers due to teachers taking leaves themselves? What will happen? Will students be taught by substitutes? So, um, we're going to know what the staff is doing in, in short order. Um, we, um, since April, the, um, state and federal government has had guidelines for family and medical leave. There are additional guidelines for the CARES Act, emergency, um, family and medical leave. That's one of the policies, um, that was under discussion, um, earlier. And, um, I believe that there will be specific information for our staff. Um, substitutes are going to be a challenge, right? That with that cohort model, having people coming in and out of the buildings. And what we're looking at is, um, perhaps permanent subs in buildings or permanent staff being reassigned to specific buildings so that, um, there, there will be coverage because of course teachers and, and all staff are entitled to sick and personal days. People get sick, um, and we're going to need to be able to accommodate that. Um, children in the ABA classes twice a week, half days. We've already covered that. And again, we'll do, um, some more information about that. Uh, we tried to register our child for elementary school in July. We're waiting to hear. So, um, Mrs. Navarez or Mr. Navarez, I'm not, I can't remember anymore who, who answered me, um, before. But, um, that, the thing is you are registered. What you're waiting to hear is not if your paperwork is approved. What we, what we are having a struggle with is that we have significant overcrowding throughout the district, um, at many grade levels. And very often students are displaced from their homeschool because of that overcrowding. Typically, we don't tell the placements, um, for students until right before we return to school. Um, I think that you, um, as far as making your decision by Friday, you need to, um, be thinking about regardless of what school, I don't know what grade level your child, elementary. So it's going to look the same, right? Kindergarten in all five elementaries is going to look the same. First through sixth grade and all of the elementaries is going to look the same. The question for you will be whether you're at your homeschool or at another school because of, um, space, if you're in the hybrid in-person model. Um, please feel free to email me directly if I can answer a question. But that's true. We have a number of families. Um, I think we have 140 families who are asking for a variance of some kind. If you're one of the, um, families who are still on the call that have that question, please email me directly and I'll try and, um, help you navigate that answer. Um, can you tell us where we log into, to know which method to choose? Yes, um, it is via the parent portal. Um, Ian, um, did, and, and thank you, Mrs. Semel Munson. Boy, you are right on it. I was just going to ask Ian to put it in, but if you scroll down just a very little bit, you'll find the, um, web address for the parent portal to, um, and please use the second link, the correct link. Um, you'll find the, um, email to the parent portal so that you can make that choice. Um, thank you. It's like having extra people on the team. I love it. Um, children who are diagnosed with ASD and cannot tolerate the masks. So, um, there is an exemption, um, in the state guidelines, um, for that mandatory mask. It does require, um, specific medical, um, involvement and diagnosis. Um, there, there are a lot of, um, pediatric associations, family and asthma associations, other breathing difficulty associations who believe very strongly that it's finding the correct kind of mask for especially, um, a mildly asthmatic or my, a child with mild breathing difficulties because they, they are better protected. Um, the, the challenge is we, we don't want any child that's already compromised to be further compromised. Um, and again, we can have that conversation with you individually if it, if it's about your individual child. Oops, I just scrolled too far. Um, how are we addressing honor classes? I think we already answered that for Mrs. Rutnick, um, and talked about how the class schedule will be held. Um, Google Forms for collecting questions prior to the meeting. So, Mrs. Munson, Semel Munson, we did do that for kindergarten and we're able to, um, make our presentation geared towards those questions. We've had four task group meetings meet multiple times and we, um, did try and prepare our presentation tonight for the, the frequently asked questions. I think that, um, it's a, an amazing idea. And again, thank you for sharing. Um, we really appreciate it and for everyone, um, for every meeting that we have. I think it's a good idea. Um, has there been a date or a guideline given to reassess if it's okay to return to normal school? And there has not. I talked about this a little bit earlier. Um, it's happening in phases and it is based on, um, the, the governor and his work with the, um, Department of Health. It is, um, based on their guidelines for health and safety and that we follow those executive orders. So we're trying to phase in, um, as best we can to add in hours and days, but I don't think that there's any data guideline that's been given for, and I, I agree with you, quote or unquote, normal school. Uh, Mrs. Locan Solo posted her email. Thank you. Um, the extracurriculars that are not sports. Um, we've made a commitment to try and look at what can be done, um, virtually, what can be done in small groups, how we can bring, um, students together in a socially distanced way, and if not socially distanced, again, virtually and online. We think that that is as important at every grade level, by the way, not just high school. Um, also at middle school and as best we can at elementary school. And we'll continue to plan for that after we figure out all, all of these big rocks. We'll, we'll add that to the next piece. Um, let's see. Mr. Kenny, if you're still on the call. For parents with children doing virtual learning, will there be accommodations made? So parents will know what the weekly lessons are so we can make sure children are meeting the goals and assisting them with those lessons? And will there be a standardized format, um, for virtual learning? I don't know. I think we've answered both of these, but maybe Kent or Janine, do you want to talk about School G a little bit more in depth here?
Yeah, so the, the plan is to move the School G for the classrooms. Uh, this provides us with consistency on a K-12 basis, which is really important to the district. One place, um, I know being a parent myself, um, my kids had multiple platforms in multiple different, um, places to go and it was very confusing. So we're trying to solidify that in School G, provide more support, uh, for parents and for, for students and teachers, um, as well as, uh, you know, it helps us by our ability to look in on School G and, and provide some plans when needed and, and help support teachers, um, as they develop their plans.
Thank you. And again, I think we've talked about, um, honors classes. We've talked a little bit about enrichment. We've talked about the virtual dedicated teacher. We are having a special needs parent meeting, um, for each school. Um, will there be opportunities to help out by donating supplies, time or money? Shelley, I don't know who you are, but thank you. Um, great question. Our Nutley Educational Foundation is currently doing a fundraiser called We've Got Your Back. Um, Ian, I don't know if you can add the, um, link to the NEF, but the Nutley Educational Foundation is currently trying to support students with, um, at-home supplies. Um, really a lovely, um, fundraiser for, um, those students that need extra help. Um, as far as time and money goes, um, I, again, I think that you're going to find that the educational foundation is probably your strongest place, um, to put that or perhaps your school PTO. Our PTOs are amazing in supporting all of the efforts in each of the schools, um, no matter what we're doing. And, and again, when I add my gratitude, the NEF, our PTOs and parents like you who are willing are, are way up there on the list. Thank you so very much. Um, the instrumental, I'm assuming the instrumental music program for incoming third graders, will they still receive lessons, um, receive their instruments from the music department? That is the plan. Dr. Riley, I don't believe is on this call, but he's been on just about every other call. Um, the same way we got state guidance, hundreds of pages. Dr. Riley also received guidance to make it possible, um, for students to still receive instruments and virtual instruction. I know a lot of you perhaps have participated in the, um, virtual instruction that's happened over the summer. Um, it's been very successful. So, um, I, I would like to think that that will continue. Can the meetings be set before we make our decisions on Friday? Oh, that's a heavy, heavy lift. Um, we're, we're talking about five meetings, right? Five elementary meetings and middle school and a high school meeting for special education, as well as a meeting for elementary, a meeting for middle school and a meeting for high school. That's 10 meetings to have happen in the next two days. And most of our meetings, this one's especially long at this point. We're hitting the four hour mark, but most of our other meetings have been about two hours. So we will do the best we can. Um, if you have specific questions that you need to make your decision, I encourage you to reach out, um, to, to Mrs. Doyle Moreno and we'll see if we can get those answers for you.
Do I see you on it as well?
If you would like, absolutely.
Scheduling concern, Dr. Glazer. The building principals would have the schedules. Uh, we can discuss your IEP individual concerns.
Yes.
That would be better, that would be a better plan than trying to wait to set up a meeting.
Yes. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And, and, um, Alfonso family, um, the delays making it harder for you to make the arrangements for your children. Um, I, I have to say, we, we've kept to our timeline pretty specifically. We released the plan August 4th. Um, we have kept to our deadline. I know tonight, um, might not be as, um, you expected, but again, I think you have a commitment from your board members and from each of us, and certainly from myself, that we're continuing to go forward. Um, we want you to be able to do what you need to do as well. And again, if you need to reach out to any of us for support, um, you have my email, you have the board members' emails, Mrs. Locan Solo's email will help you as best as we can.
And, and moving forward with that, I'm sure that the parents know that the nine board members and yourself and Janine and Kent and, and the whole district are, are concerned about the children. We have children in the district, we have grandchildren in the district. We are going to come up with some type of plan that works best for Nutley. It might not please everybody, but it's going to work as best we can for Nutley. So all of us are moving in the right direction. Tonight was just a little bit of a hiccup, but we'll move through it. I'm sure our board members will, will be getting more answers or questions, answers to their questions before Monday and we'll rehash this again on Monday and certainly come up with a plan as soon as we can, uh, that's going to please Nutley.
Thank you, Mr. Kuzinski. And thank you, Alfonso family, for your follow-up. It's, um, I wish I could get up and get a drink. That's the only thing that's, that's bothering me now, but I, we are going to answer every question before we get off of this, before we get out of this meeting or chat. Um, what is SEL? Thank you, Ms. Lodato. It is social emotional learning. Um, there is a significant piece of our program and plan dedicated to social emotional learning. Um, I, I am hesitant since no one's really asking right now to go into detail about that, but it is in the plan. And anybody that has a specific question, please reach out because we're really, really proud of everything that the Strategic Planning Committee for Health and Wellness has done to research and put that plan into place. We're really proud of what our school counseling department and our, um, crisis teams and all of our community partners have done to make that happen. So, um, I give you all a shout out and if there's a specific question, please reach out again. So what if it's Eric Mandy? If you're still on, um, if you're one of our more than 120 people still on the call, please unmute so we can make sure we answer your question. What if it's the opposite way? If you change your mind? If you're in person to virtual, will they be grouped with their homeschool Washington? Or will there be a possibility of my child being in class with kids from a different school? Um, and I do think Janine answered that there is a possibility that virtually you might be with other children just based on the numbers. And that's part of why we need the time to evaluate your request so that we can make sure we have room for everybody. All right, thank you. I guess you're not still here or if you are, you can't unmute, so I'm moving on. Um, oh, and Ms. Garrow answered in the chat. Thank you so much. I love our, can I just say, I love this. It's a long night, but I really do appreciate, I'm still seeing smiles and I'm still seeing people working together. I can't ask for any more than that. So thank you for that. Um, inclement weather days such as rain, how do we handle arrival and dismissal? Ms. Bonif, you might be my favorite person that I've never met yet. Your questions have been spot on all night and I love it. So it's going to be a challenge, right? Um, on a, say a rainy or a thundery morning with kids lined up, what are we going to do? Um, and, and in the plan, it does talk about this and, um, I alluded to this, but I will say it specifically, the same as a snow day, I think we need to be ready to have a virtual day on those days, right? If we see by 6:30, 7 o'clock in the morning that we're having a downpour, right? Or there's an electrical storm, you're going to get that robo-call that says, please stay home. And I know that's challenging for parents, but in all of our task force, every single one said they would rather have that, that, um, move to virtual than to have their kids out in an electrical storm, even under a tent. So, um, that, that's the truth. And as far as dismissal, um, we have to look at what that would look like, right? Everybody's dismissed at the same time at 12:30. So on a, on a crazy day like that, if there was inclement weather, we might have to stagger that dismissal, right? Ask parents to, to pull up, um, in 10-minute. Ask parents to pull up in 10-minute increments or intervals so that we could get the kids out safely. Let's see. 100%, oh, so Mr. Agia, I'm sorry if I'm pronouncing it wrong, Agila or Agia. If you're still on the call, by all means unmute. The question says there'll be a form to be signed regarding expectations. Is this form available for prior review? What does it entail? What's the parent expectation referring to Wi-Fi and computer access? Now, it's more, and I am happy to elaborate, but it's more that you'll make that learning environment for your child, virtual environment, a welcoming environment, similar to what we talked about in the spring. Perhaps a dedicated space for them to do their work or a consistent schedule. Those are the parent expectations that we're talking about. We're not talking about any purchase or anything like that. The computer access and the Wi-Fi. Again, according to our surveys, 99.5% of everybody has that. If you don't, please access that virtual learning website, and we'll be happy to help you. Ms. McMullin, if you're still on the call, please unmute, and we'll get your address. But these questions are looking at educational strategies, materials, and grading. Hi, Ms. McMullin, your name and address, please.
My name's Dr. Dorothy McMullin, and 107 River Road, Nutley.
Hi, thank you and welcome. Thank you for joining us tonight. And I don't know if Kent or Janine want to work your way through the four questions. It's like Passover.
I ran out of space.
Thank you, we appreciate you asking.
Hi, Dr. McMullin, how are you? It's Janine.
Thank you, Janine.
I'll just go through a few of these, and then Kent, I may throw a couple to you. What rubric will be used to grade students against the grade level standards? Will these be shared with parents? So we're going to continue to use the same curriculum and the same rubrics that we've used in the past. We do have report card rubrics that can be shared with parents at any time. And we also have rubrics specifically related to the standards-based report card that we'll continue to use. If a student is pulled for a related service or strategies class, how and when will that be scheduled? I'll speak specifically for strategies. For strategies, we're going to be doing similar structure to what we've done in the past with level literacy intervention and other strategy services. And those will likely be provided virtually. So they'll be in addition to the instruction that students are receiving in the hybrid model, for example, or in the virtual learning. How will materials be distributed?
So I just have a quick question to that.
Oh, sure.
So if you are going to be providing that in addition, when would that happen during the four-hour period? Or will it be later in the day in addition to the extra work the children already are doing in the virtual model or the hybrid model? Because when they're in-person, they're come in and they're pulled from a class setting, and then they go back.
Yeah.
It's extra work. So I just want a clarification on how that's going to be embedded into the whole model.
Absolutely. Yeah, so typically for a level literacy intervention or a strategy, you're absolutely correct, we do it as a double dose. So we don't try to pull out of that specific course, but they get pulled out of another content area that they have to make up work in. Under this model, and we talked a little bit about this in the spring with our strategies teachers also, there'll be conversations ongoing between the classroom teacher and the strategies teacher to develop a work plan for those students. So which of those students, which of those assignments would take priority, for example, and that sort of thing, so that they're not overloaded with that work?
Okay, then that's shared with the parents.
Yes, that can actually be shared with you at any time through the strategies or gen ed teacher. Yeah. And I would say that there were some instances in the spring where some parents did reach out. The strategies teachers told me and said that it was a lot managing both of them, and they worked out some plans on how to adjust. So they've been pretty flexible with that. How will materials be distributed to students, both virtually or hybrid? We've talked about this a little bit. We're still working on the logistics of this. But we did talk about maybe possibly having a pick-up time for parents to come and get things like textbooks that would then stay at home and wouldn't be traveling back and forth with the students. And I think that information would be coming from the building.
So would that also include all the manipulatives that would go with, like, different mathematical programs?
Yeah.
Would they have individual packets they would bring home and then keep in their desks?
Yes, yeah. So we're going to be giving at-home learning kits, which would have manipulatives that students can cut out, copied on cardstock for things like the math pattern blocks and fraction tiles and the foundation tiles. And those can actually be left at home, so that way they don't have to go back and forth with the student.
Okay.
How is the curriculum being revised to reflect topics not covered or regression? Great question, and I know we're like-minded here.
Yes, I know.
Question. Just knowing our conversations in the past, we're going to be doing a lot of formative assessment in the fall. And we've already spoken about this with some of the teachers in our grade level meetings, honestly, at the end of spring, and talking about how there's going to have to be some review of different content standards and how students are not going to be coming in in a place where they usually would at the fall of each grade level. We're doing a lot of curriculum work this summer. I know specifically Ms. Benavides is doing some compacting with the ELA curriculum, because we know that that has a lot of moving parts, and we want to make sure that we're doing what's best by kids in the remote aspect of that.
Right, and you know, I work in a district, so that's why I was putting up the question, because I know personally, we have revised the way we do our assessments in the beginning of the year. I know you use DIBELS. It's really more of an in-person assessment. And how would that be changed? And then how the curriculum actually would be changed? And if you're going to share that information with the parents so we actually know what the expectations are? Because when I look at standards, I know exactly where I know that my child should be.
Yes.
So I'm pushing for that. And not everyone's going to be in the same place. So I just want to make sure we're all on the same page.
Yes, absolutely. And DIBELS is our dyslexia screener, just for everyone else on the call. And that is a mandate, and we'll be continuing to administer that. In the spring, we did administer it for the at-risk students. We kind of worked around the barriers of the virtual learning. So I think we're in a good place to do that again this fall.
Good, good.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now I got a drink, I got to stand up for a minute. I'm revived to make it through the rest of these questions. So watch out, all of you who are still with us on this chat. So Ms. Gonzalez, I think we've also talked about the ABA, so I'm going to keep going. Ms. Abutan, I'm sorry if I'm pronouncing your name incorrectly. If you're still on the call, please unmute and help me with that and tell us your address. I'm not sure what you're asking about watching the lesson while kids are doing hybrid. Do you mean at home?
Right, this is Denise Abuta, 71 Quarry Street.
Thank you, I didn't do so bad. All right, so if you can clarify your question, that would be great, thank you.
So while the kids are, if the kids are doing hybrid, so when they're actually in the class, would we be able, for the afternoon portion, watch them or no?
No, you won't be able to see in the classroom.
No? What about if it's a virtual student? They won't be able to see what's going on in the classroom so they can keep track? Or they're strictly staying on School G and they'll only be able to be with the teachers in the afternoon?
Yeah. So it's not live streaming, if you're asking, if the classroom instruction is being livestreamed? Now, we've spoken about that during the course of the evening, that that's not a possibility. The students who are 100% virtual will have their direct instruction in that, but it won't be simultaneous to what's happening in the classroom.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Sure. Thank you, thanks for hanging in there. I think Janine just talked about how materials are being distributed. Ms. Semel Munson, what's bows? Bows or bows? Are you taking a bow? You deserve to take a bow, but I don't know what that means. Well, if you're still here, tell me, or put it in the chat, because you're doing an awesome job keeping.
That was from before, don't worry about it now.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate you. All right. There is no problem asking all of these questions, any of you who have questions. This is the point and the whole reason why we're here, so please keep asking. So as a parent of a kindergartner and a preschooler and a high school teacher here in Nutley, I'm super nervous about the uncertainty and just want to be prepared. Thank you for taking the time. Oh, I was looking for a question, thank you. It's a long night, so we appreciate you sticking with us, especially with those little ones at home. And thanks, Kent, too, for you. We're happy you're still here. Kent and Janine have little ones at home, too. I don't know if you got to see Kisses Goodnight, but it's been a long night for them. Thank you. Charlie's email. Let's see, it's possible dedicated virtual teacher for 100% virtual learning. What would that look like for middle school for, say, an advanced math class or band? And speaking of band, how will that look virtually versus hybrid when it's a daily class and only a third of the students will be present on any given day? Is there an outdoor option? Lots of, all, again, great questions and all under discussion. Kent, you want to hit it?
I can answer them. So the model does look different, secondary versus elementary, just due to the fact that in the secondary school, there are seven different content area teachers that seat children throughout the day. So it's more of an integrated approach going to, for the 100% virtual learners. That is why they must, we must plan for remote instruction with some kids coming in so that they can access that remote instruction and also have the ability. There is some feedback coming from somebody. Yeah, I'm not sure who you are. I think it's you, I'm sorry. How it looks for middle school and advanced math class or band? Again, band will meet, band will meet with those third students, and they will have class. We're still learning about what band looks like, you know, with the aerosol of certain things and the need to take your mask off to play an instrument. There are many options we're sorting through, and we are confident band will still take place. We are still learning the capacity and the guidelines for what that looks like in instruction as we move forward. Zero period will also take place for orchestra and different things that are different schools as well. Strings gives us a different, a better challenge, I should say, with not having to take off their masks to play string instruments. Speaking of band, is there an, yes, there are outdoor options. We're looking to increase outdoor options. I'm glad you brought that up, because I'm a big fan of providing outdoor options and trying to get as many classes to different areas. We're very thankful of the NEF outdoor classroom, and we're currently looking to acquire tent space and use it as much as possible for our schools.
May I ask the question of if we choose the 100% virtual learning, but if you do have an outdoor band portion, would my child be able to attend that? Because that's the kind of thing, when you're virtually doing it, it doesn't work.
I would be hesitant to say yes, because technically that child has opted for virtual instruction for that time. It's a great question, and one second question I think you provided that we haven't received. But I would say that that would be challenging based on your selection. I would say that I think in some cases, instrumental was better virtually because of the aerosol and because of the taking of the mask off. So the virtual option may be much more feasible for the playing of instruments, as well as singing in some cases, and we're still exploring all those options, you know, in our district.
Okay, and just to clarify with the dedicated virtual teacher for the secondary level, they wouldn't have a specific teacher? It would be a teacher that would be assigned to them, okay.
It's a different strategy. They would be placed in the same class with the same teacher, whether they'd be in hybrid or virtual. So the strategy is to provide instruction and supplement the in-person with a virtual meeting for those students.
Okay, appreciated, thank you.
Absolutely.
Ms. Bonif, again? Yes, I don't know which of our parents came up with the Google form. I know, again, Janine did it for kindergarten. And considering that we're, I think, as Principal Carney from Radcliffe School, who's still on the call, mentioned that this might be a board record, we'll definitely be doing that in the future. Thank you, although I'm going to keep working my way through now. Let's see, I had to walk away when I answered about the windows and the window, we have to keep them open. So I am hopeful, optimistically, cautiously praying, I don't know what to say, that this isn't going to be an issue, but the windows do have to be open for air year-round. And I just saw Ms. Garraway answered that, thank you. So on the windows, could I choose to keep him home and do virtual because he's going back to school? So again, we gave a process throughout the meeting and in the policy for switching. If you do need to change, there is some time limitations involved with that. And so we want to make sure that you all know what those are. They'll be clearly marked in the plan and in the policies, I promise, well before the time you need to choose. Thank you. So this is a great suggestion, and I know I talked about parent groups previously, Ms. Bonif. I don't know what school that your children go to, and maybe that is something that you're already involved with. But we have two or three parent groups that are working with some of the high school groups to do just that. Have a high school student who's paired with several families. So again, we minimize that contact, but that high school student serves kind of as, I don't want to say a babysitter, more like a role model and a mentor, right? Those kids are all doing their assignments together, maybe tutoring, definitely community service hours. And again, if you're interested in hearing more about it or maybe starting it at your school, if it's not one of the schools that it's happening at, please email me. I would love to talk to more of you, more about that with you. You're very welcome, everybody that stayed on. This is what we do. I know the board members, when they get elected, they're told 10 hours a month instead of 10 hours all in one day. But they're amazing, they are volunteers, and their commitment is not just appreciated by you and the rest of the community, but I will speak for myself, for the administrators, their time, commitment, and effort is more than appreciated. Could not do this work alone. Thank you, thank you, thank you. We do, I'm getting to the bottom, though, because we're catching up on the time. So I can tell to the end.
Not a problem for me.
I do think we clarified, yes, thank you, you're almost there. I appreciate the encouragement, Ms. Semel Munson. Oh, that was from before, okay. I was all excited. Can we get a sense of how kindergarten will be? Will it be militant? Will it be playful and cheerful even though there's social distancing? Great questions. Again, I know that Janine did meetings yesterday for hundreds of parents. We're hoping not militant, let's say that. It will be social distanced, but hopefully not militant. Janine, do you want to say something about that?
Yeah, I will just say that our kindergarten teachers truly are nurturing. They're wonderful. They're a really engaging group. Kent and I are actually meeting with them later this week because they want to know about how they can start to prepare for kindergarten, even in the summer, when they should be relaxing and just enjoying themselves, right? But they're a really great group. It will be playful, it will be fun, it just won't be, you know, gathering on the rug and turning and talking and the same way. But our teachers are wonderful, they're very creative. They did a great job with kindergarten using School G in the spring. So just rest assured that they'll be in good hands.
Thank you, thank you. This is actually Eric and Mandy, that was our question. So again, to that, no, I guess on the flip side there, if, so if a child is, let's say, crying, needs consoling or needs help getting their shoes tied, things of that nature. I mean, obviously, that's not an issue, right? Everyone's wearing masks, and it's just trying to get a sense of, you know, how strict it's going to be, right? Naturally, I'm picturing, yeah, everyone just sitting in their desk, looking straight, not looking to the left or the right.
Yeah, they still look left and right. Smiling is okay, and it's actually, it's funny. We've been talking a lot about building up the stamina for masks. So I would say things like that to incoming kindergarten parents. Start using the mask for a couple minutes each day and then build up to 10 minutes, 20 minutes, 30 minutes. You know, practice just simple things, having your child go to the bathroom before they come into school, just to limit that if possible. But of course, we're going to do whatever we can to help them and to nurture them. I have a son going into kindergarten in my home district, so I completely understand a little bit of the nerves that are going. a little bit of the nerves that are going on with some of the kindergarten parents now.
Much appreciated, thank you very much, guys.
Thank you. This is my, I don't know why this question made me smile. What will class photos look like? I don't know if anybody's got one of them sent to you, but I actually got one sent to me of a kid in pajama pants and a bowtie, looking off into the distance, and in the distance were masked kids. So I don't mean to make light of your question. They, one of the conversations we've had with our safety and security team is how could we set up the outdoor tents at each of the buildings to be able to take the class picture, to be able to make it, you know, the photographers can do a background, but so that every parent who has the every grade level picture will still have that grade level picture. Believe it or not, this has come up before, and again, I don't mean to make light of it. I know a couple of parents have asked me, you know, would kids have to wear masks in the picture? What would we do? I don't know that we have that level of specificity yet, but we are talking about a way to do class pictures. So hang in there with us, we will, we will get there, and you will have a record, at least of whatever, whatever the September 2020 looks like.
They won't have a record, they'll have a picture.
There you go, ha ha. See, now I know it's late for everybody. Now we've all gone off the rails. Thank you, and thank you for sticking with us. Again, we still have more than 110 people on this call, and we're going on four and a half hours, so pretty impressive, thank you. Kent, we must have a new middle school parent who doesn't know what the zero period is, so can you please share what that is?
Yeah, no problem. So zero period is a, at the middle school, we have zero period for kids that place into band and choir, so we can provide both offerings as well as other elective. So typically, zero period would start before the normal school day. We're trying to find a time in the middle school, and zero period may be offered at lunchtime, actually, so we haven't solidified that idea yet, and working with the teacher to find a time. Same thing at the high school, we bring our orchestra students together for zero periods, our only class, as well as SAT prep, and we're looking for a time, and to be honest, I'm not sure where we settled, but it usually impacts a small amount of students that are aware of zero period. And I would like to just circle back to Ms. Cox, I saw she left a question, I hope I answered your question, about the transition between virtual and hybrid, and it was designed like that purposefully, because we are anticipating multiple transitions, and we want to build a plan that takes into account as we can move back and forth between the hybrid and the virtual learning. So we would still have a structured morning, and all students would meet virtually instead of a third of the students coming in person, but instruction would look very similar, I don't want to say the same, but very similar in both models, and that's very important to us to keep the instruction segment down to be similar.
Thank you. Oh my gosh, you're still taking notes, you're amazing. Thank you, at 11 o'clock for still taking notes, and no, thank you for still being on the call, Ms. Prince, and for everything you've done. Halloween, you are kidding. So for the people that know me well, I love Halloween, but it is, it is a challenge at school with, with safety and security, and every year I say, okay, we'll do Halloween, but with no masks. I can't say that this year, because everybody will need a mask for Halloween, so I'm not sure what that'll look like. I won't say it'll be canceled, I will give you hope, I will keep you with hope, but just know, I don't know how I can do it without masks. So that'll be a challenge. College and career prep for 11th graders. I don't know, Kent, if you want to talk about that? I know that that's still a pretty robust conversation, you know, for those kids.
Yeah, sure, we are, we are going around about many of the same college and career prep. Our CTE program will still do work-study virtually and things of that nature within the guidance, we will still participate in all of those things, as well as preparation for college. We will still provide the opportunities to meet with colleges, we are working on plans to make sure some of the testing cycles have integrity, although that's not finalized, things of that nature. We are planning, they may be virtual, but we are hoping to move forward with those items.
Thank you. So, Mr. Scherzier or Scherzier, I don't know, correct me if you're still on the call, come on and tell us you're here. Your child goes to the nurse every day, and that is something that we're going to need to talk about, right? Because the nurse has to be in the isolation space. The nurse has to be, as part of our pandemic team, working in a different way. So we're going to need to speak to you individually off of this call, to know what's entailed and, and how to make sure that we can get your child what your child needs, because they won't be able to eat or drink in the classroom, right? So we'll have to have that conversation individually. I don't know if you're on, Mr., is it Scherzier, Scherzier?
Can you hear me?
I can, hi, but you don't sound Mr. at all.
No, that's my son's name, I'm sorry.
No, hi, what's your name and address, please?
I'm 113 East Center Street in Nutley.
Hi.
Hi, my name is Raquel.
Last name?
Triciaire.
Oh, I wasn't even close, sorry, I apologize, I'll do better next time.
No, that's okay.
So the nurse has to be deployed in a different way, so, so in a different conversation, in an individual conversation, with your building administrator and whoever, we'll figure out what needs to happen if it's safe and how we can do that for your child.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, though, for asking.
Thank you.
Important to know. Oh, thank God Halloween's a Saturday. Halloween's not canceled, anybody who asked me. You can wear your mask. Let's see, "If an elementary student needs to switch from hybrid to virtual, how likely is it that move to a virtual classroom would be at a different school?" We have no idea yet, until we have those numbers back, we won't know, we just, you know, we're trying to be committed to not having huge virtual classrooms, right? The idea is for the teacher to be able to still provide that personalized instruction to the child. I'm going to say, if you make the switch, though, the child probably wouldn't be familiar with the teacher or any of the students anyway, based on the, the way the classes are split, based on the number of kids in the classroom and the teachers, it would be challenging. So I know that the option to switch sounds good, but I would say if it doesn't work out for you to do it, is to realize that soon into the process, that that's what I would say, because the longer it goes on and the more people switch, I think the harder it'll be to make you that, that guarantee. And you're welcome, of course. Will parents be, this is a question for, I think we have 99, it's like 99 bottles of beer on the wall. We have 99 people left on the wall. So will parents be supervising more than they will be teaching? What's it going to look like for our work schedule so we can be there to help in third grade? Bless you. I know, this is, this is challenging.
Yeah, so I'll just speak to that briefly. So at the third grade level, and really at the elementary level, we really acknowledge and we appreciate that parents are partnering with us in some sense with the virtual learning, and we understand that you can't always necessarily walk away from a kindergartner or first grader and just leave them in front of a screen to do an assignment. With that being said, by third grade, really, the students should be pretty self-directed in that they should be able to attend to Schoology, watch the virtual lessons independently. It's not to say that parents wouldn't still be involved in one way or another, but parents at that level shouldn't necessarily have to be teaching their child anything specifically, it would be more just supervising and checking with them and just checking in and being there if they have, you know, difficulties.
Thank you. I'm afraid to say it, because you never know what's going to happen, but that was the last question in the chat. So is there anybody else that wants to use the little icon, raise your hand, make a comment before we log out, before, before Mr. Kaczynski takes back over to his doodle and closes us up for the night? Wait. Oh, good, thank you, thank you, you're all welcome, we appreciate all of you. I do mean this sincerely, to have almost 100 people on after 11 o'clock is, is a spectacular show of community, and, and I could not tell you how appreciative we are for all of your questions, your input and your feedback, it's never too much. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
And along with that, I certainly wanted to thank the community, but to thank our staff, Kent, Janine, Helen, Mike, Dr. Glazer, very important, very, very, Dave DePiz is here with us, I know he's been hanging in, very informative, very up to date, very matter-of-fact. I want to thank my board members for the input they had in getting us to this point. Since we have taken a vote to close down after this, we'll have a further discussion, I'm sure I would encourage my board members to reach out for administration, whoever they're comfortable talking to in administration, get the answers. We're going to continue this conversation. It doesn't look like our meeting is going to be scheduled for Monday, simply because of other time constraints that are coming in with people being in and out of the district, so we will set up a meeting as soon as we can next week. I thank everybody, I'll take a motion for adjournment.
Mr. President? Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Yes, you may want to ask to see if any board members have any questions?
I really don't think so, Mr. Farrar, I appreciate that, but the movement was to adjourn when we got done with the public part of the meeting, and that's what I'm going to do. I'll take a movement for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. Riley, second.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you again, everybody, thank you for hanging in with us so long. Good night, everybody, all about the next meetings.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you. I won't be talking to you at 7:00 in the morning.